Five thirty.
Five thirty. This time I'll call the monthly meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners to order. I ask that you please silence your cellphone at this time. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Langley to do the invocation and Commissioner Buzzio to do the pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to come together one more time. And God, now, we ask that you give us the wisdom, guidance, and understanding for proper governance of your people. Bless us and keep us in the hollowed hand. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask for comments on the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add an item for discussion that I think is of great concern to the people of Beaufort County, and that is how slow the FEMA flood maps are being produced.
Okay.
We should've had these maps a year ago.
So item number eleven will be the FEMA flood maps. Any other additions or changes? If not, all those in favor of the amended agenda, raise your right hand. That was unanimous. This time, I asked if anybody has a conflict of interest on any of the agenda items for Hearing none, we'll move to items for presentation. At this time, we want to recognize Doug Visser. And Doug, I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna ask you and Shane to come up front. Dear Doug, on behalf of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners, as well as all the residents of Beaufort County and the EMS Oversight Committee, I would like to express appreciation for the service you have rendered for the citizens of Beaufort County by serving on the EMS Oversight Committee as chairman. The time and energy you have given in an effort to assist your community has not gone unnoticed. Serving as the chairman and member of the EMS Oversight Committee from April 2014 to September 2017 can be very time-consuming and stressful, yet rewarding at the same time. The Board of Commissioners and EMS Oversight Committee greatly appreciate your guidance and expertise which you have shared in this role. So at this time, I'll ask Doug, and if you want to bring your family up, that'll be fine, and then Shane, if you will, come up. At this time, we're gonna have a presentation on the 300th anniversary of Blackbeard's death events. Have we heard anything? Okay. All right. Well, we'll move on to public comments. The first one we have, and the only one we have, is Kevin Deasley. Kevin?
Good evening. I'm representing the many individuals across the county who have been before you and are very thankful for the solar moratorium that you have put into place. I thank you for your attention over the last several months and as many as voiced their concerns. You have taken action to protect Beaufort County's concerns and their residents, the landowners, and the neighbors from the solar facilities. As you now invest interest and attention to the ordinances of our county, I would like you to take full advantage of the time the moratorium allows. We thank you for your service to Beaufort County and your efforts in maintaining the history, agriculture, industry, and recreation, for your efforts haven't gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. We're down to the election of the chairman and the vice chairman, and this time, I'll turn it over to you, Katie.
This time, I'll be taking nominations for the position of chairman for the year of 2018.
I'll nominate Frankie Waters.
I nominate Hood Richardson.
Any other nominations? Those that would like to vote for Waters, please raise your hand. Five. Those for Commissioner Richardson. One. Commissioner Brennan, did you vote?
Were you?
Were you gonna vote?
I'm gonna vote Frankie.
Okay. I missed. I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. Chairman Waters will remain chairman for the year of 2018.
Okay. The floor is now open for the election of vice chairman to the Board of Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, I nominate Jerry Langley.
You want to address that to the chairman?
Not chairman, yet. You have been sworn in.
Oh, you gotta be sworn in?
You don't have to form me this time? Okay, well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Will you accept my apology, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Will you accept my?
Oh, well, yes, you're doing good, sir. Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jerry Langley.
Okay. Is there anyone else? All right. All those in favor of Commissioner Langley to be vice chairman, raise your right hand. And that was unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
Chairman, you would wish to keep the chairs the same?
Unless somebody wants to bribe me to move to a different location. All right.
Go ahead.
Okay. We're down to items for consent. Can I get a motion to approve the items for consent? Got a motion by Commissioner Booth and a second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull item number four, purchase order contracts over 20,000.
Okay. That'll be pulled.
Which one was that, Hood?
Item number four, and that'll be moved down to item number 14. Okay. All those in favor of the consent, without one exception, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six, one. Okay, we're down for items for discussion, and the first one is you, Seth, addressing the addressing ordinance committee update.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Thank y'all for having me. Back in November, speaking on behalf of the ordinance committee, addressing ordinance committee, we had hoped to have a working draft for y'all this month, and I think we jumped the gun there, and I apologize for that. I have been struggling with illness for the last month and have just not been able to focus on this a whole lot, and the committee's had a hard time meeting, so it's a pleasure of the board to like to bring this back to y'all either in January or maybe February, depending on how kind of progress we make.
Any comment from any of the commissioners? We'll let you bring it back.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, we're down to item number two, covering trash containers during transport. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, there's a lot of trash up and down the roads of Beaufort County. It's been a pet peeve of mine for a long time, and after some people talked with me about it, I decided I would bring it up. We need to consider an ordinance that the sheriff or Highway Patrol could enforce that has to do with people driving up and down the roads, taking their trash to the roll-off, not putting the top on it. When they get to the roll-off, most of the trash is not there. I've seen some really bad things myself. There's a lot of places that have some pretty severe laws on this, and if you're caught, I'm not talking about a $50.00 fine, I'm talking about putting enough on it to make it worthwhile because it's simply not gonna go away. Within the last month, I've witnessed contractors driving down the road throwing cigarette packs out windows, not on just one occasion, but on several occasions. When they finish eating their sandwich, they throw it, they throw the wrapper out the window. And if you go up and down the roads, we have a lot more trash than we need to have. So that's my purpose in this tonight, is to see what this board thinks about looking into establishing an ordinance about keeping our roads clean. California, I worked in California, they had, when our truck drivers loaded their trucks, they had a whisk room. Now, they were loading loose materials on trucks, and when they were loaded, they climbed on that truck, and they whisked the top rail of that truck end to end. And I asked one of them, I said, "Why are you doing this?" He said, "Because if we're caught, if we're stopped, and we have an item as large as a pea laying on the rail of the truck, we get a fine." They did this religiously. It was a strongly enforced law. Frankly, I think it will take strong enforcement here because we have a lot of people who just simply don't respect themselves, don't respect other people, don't respect the environment, and don't respect the county. So this is not gonna be an easy thing to get accomplished.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Brennan.
I'd like to say something in regards to what Commissioner Richardson is saying. I've also experienced the exact same thing. I lived down on River Road and down on the dump road, the trash got so bad on the dump road down there that I finally went to Department of Transportation, taught them about it, and they got a crew down there to pick it up. So this is something that's been needed to be looked at in Beaufort County for a long time, not only on the dump road, but all over the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I can support that also, and what I'd like to do is, if we're working on that ordinance, is to also include the contracting sites where they'll take mud off of the contract site and the tires and get it all over the road, and it was bumpy and stones and stuff like that. If we're gonna go this way and look to clean up the county and keep our roads clean, it's not only trash, it's also contractor waste, which when they come off the site with the mud and the stones and everything else, something else to look at.
You're talking about from, like, roll-off sites? Or are you?
Roll-off sites, where they're building something, and they don't have stone down, so when they come off, they...
Right. Now, you just landed on something. That's enforced by the state. All it should take is a phone call to the state to get that taken care of. That's enforced under the erosion and sedimentation control ordinance, but we can include it in our ordinance, too.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. But if you see that kind of thing going on, you need to be calling Deaner, 946-6481, and tell them what's going on and where it is.
I have reported it to the state, but I think it's something we should consider in our ordinance.
Other commissioners?
There's already a statute for littering, and I don't know how much meat will be in a county ordinance against the general statutes. I mean, because basically, a lot of times, when people get a citation for littering, the amount of the fine is contingent on the amount of litter, and part of the statute reads that did intentionally, because there are some folk who actually litter, had no intentions of littering, and will turn around and go back and pick up whatever they need to pick up. I'm not saying I'm against the ordinance, but I just want us to remember that there's already general statutes for it.
Commissioner Langley, isn't that a state statute?
Yes. It's enforceable by who?
DOT.
Anybody?
Any law enforcement officer.
Maybe what we should do is to have the manager look into what some other counties are doing about this, and then see what the options are, and then talk about this again.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Brian, will you do that? One other comment while we're talking about trash. I've had two complaints as it relates to the site at Hawkins Beach and the one at Beach Ridge, where on certain days, the packer was broken or full and no room. As a matter of fact, your chairman went to the one at Beach Ridge, I think it's been maybe three weeks ago, and it was around lunchtime, and I ended up having to go all the way to Yatesville. Everything was full at that site. Of course, it was a Monday, so, but when I went to Yatesville, the problem with Yatesville is you got to climb up the steps to throw your stuff over because they're compact or was full. So, okay, so Brian's gonna look into that. Number three, videotaping of commissioner meetings in the new boardroom at, still call it First Bank, or old First Bank, Commissioner Richardson.
The purpose of this particular item is, I'm not clear in my mind of how we're gonna handle the videotaping when we move to the new location. Christina has sent me some diagrams of the floor plan, which I had seen before and had not picked up on, but there is some discussion that maybe there should be a way of having a press box, maybe we should talk to the press, maybe we should talk to the TV people. I know the ceiling is low in that room, but a six-inch increase in height on a little platform that the TV people, when they're here, could get on, because right now, we've got a full room, and they have to wrestle with this situation when they come. But we need to figure out how we're gonna do this, and whether we're gonna have our own equipment. I understand that's one of the thoughts. We need to nail this down, whether we're gonna have our own equipment, we're gonna have somebody to operate that equipment with the county or outside the county, or how we're gonna go about doing this.
Brian, would you like to address that?
I can't yet. In our conversation with the architect who designed it, they obviously do that kind of work as well, and have done that for other local governments. In the conversation with that, there was an allowance that was put in the contract price that would handle all AV, microphones, everything, and essentially, we were going, as I recall, the way that was gonna be, was to allow the contractor to receive proposals from AV vendors who do that professionally. The idea was to have certain fixed cameras in locations, as well as a pan-zoom tilt camera that could be operated remotely, and all that would be fed back to a central location where we would either contract with someone to do that, or we may do that in-house, probably contract to do that, because you still have to produce and put it all together, and we don't do that. But the idea was to make it very convenient and more user-friendly, instead of having to set stuff up, move it around. The idea, the conversation about a raised area for the press, we had not anticipated doing something like that, simply because the layout of the room is designed such that it can be used for other things besides just a meeting room, and that would obviously take away from space that was available in that. Typically, when we have outside press come in, I mean, it's not that often, they typically bring their tripods, and they're in and out very quickly, and typically aren't in our way or we're in their way. So we just haven't received any concerns about that from news media, and that was an issue, so.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Let me ask you a question. Would somebody be on-site to handle the equipment?
Would somebody be on-site?
On-site during our meetings.
Sure.
Because you were talking about remote.
Well, when I say remote, I mean in the next room.
And the cost, comparison cost what we're paying now vis-à-vis what we'd be doing under the new system? Have we done any cost analysis?
No, because when you say a cost analysis of...
Well, you're talking about having a system in there, some will be stationary and some is gonna be motion, in and out, stuff like that, and somebody off-site was gonna be controlling some of the cameras. That's what I understood.
Someone in a central location. Everything would run to the back room back there where it would be, where you'd have it set up to where all the video would come into that point, so it'd be centralized.
Okay. But who on-site is gonna control also? So raise the sound over the sounds, some is poor, talk, speak louder, softer than others, some louder. If something goes wrong immediately during the meeting, who's gonna be there to take care of it? I've gone to a lot of meetings. When a company I had, we set up a lot of meetings, and we've always had somebody on-site if something always goes wrong. So I was wondering how we're gonna handle that.
I mean, right now, we have someone in our contract to do that, the reporting force. We would either continue with that, or we would train someone in-house. That really hasn't been discussed completely.
So you're talking about more of the design system and implement and putting it in place, but not actually running it during the meeting?
Right, right. I mean, I think our purpose was to try to fix the equipment so that it wouldn't have to be set up, take down, put up, that it'd be in a centralized location so that one person could go there and sit. I mean, again, someone's still gotta put it together and produce it, so there still has gotta be some interaction there.
One last question, I just thought of. Would we own the equipment or would we lease the equipment?
No, we would own the equipment. I mean, all the wiring and all that would be...
The wiring I can see, but the actual equipment, is there a cost benefit to that? And we have to keep updating it as technology changes?
I mean, I would think that when we're talking about a camera, we're not talking about something that gets changed out every two, three years. I mean, I don't think that would be an issue.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, my concern is that we start thinking about this now rather than at the last minute to see exactly how we're gonna do it, and we go ahead and talk to the press, see if they have some feelings about, you know, what might help them, and, you know, one thing is, are we gonna have microphones like these? Are we gonna have drop-down microphones? How are we gonna do these things? I don't want somebody walking in saying, "I've decided this is what we're gonna do."
Well, what we had anticipated doing, like I say, through the bid document, was that professional audiovisual vendors would provide a proposal that we would say, "Here's the setup." I mean, the crowd that did the work for us was the one that did the AV setup and built the stuff for the Greenville City Council. I mean, they know what they're doing, so.
Well, I understand that, but there's still a lot of decisions to be made there. I don't want the architect deciding, is what I'm saying. If we don't decide, the architect will decide, and we don't need that to happen. We need to make sure that we know how this is gonna work out, instead of somebody coming in and saying, "You didn't let me know, so I had to make a decision, so here it is."
We're happy to have any members of the board who wants to sit with us and talk about that, be glad to do that.
Okay. And the way the room is designed is pretty much like this, where it can be used for other meetings, and where the chairs can be moved around.
That's correct.
Anytime the news media says we need a big space at the back, I guess we can accommodate that one, the rooms being set up. If that happens. Okay, item number four is a jail report. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, the jail report is pretty good this month, shows you what can happen. We're down to the last report, weekly report, had 59, I believe it was 59 people, I'd have to look it up, people that were incarcerated in Beaufort County, and actually, 11 or 12 of those were out of the county. So our jail is getting thin insofar as business goes, and this is a good thing. There are a couple of problems that go with the count of prisoners. Number one is we have 12 or 13 prisoners who have been incarcerated for more than six months. That is just too long to keep people with drug charges and things like that. Admittedly, some of those people are charged with murder. A year is too long to keep somebody charged with murder, as far as that goes. If you can't get him in, get him tried, and get him out of there in a year, there's something wrong. I will say this, the DA has been very cooperative. He and I go back and forth on this, and he has been very cooperative and helpful in addressing the numbers of people in jail and why they're in jail. About six or seven of the people that are long-termers are incarcerated outside of the county in safekeeping or something of that order. So we're paying about $300.00 a day to keep people out of the county in so-called safekeeping. These are all expenses that can be lowered, the DA is aware of that, and he has responded to it very well, I'm glad to say. So we need to be appreciative of the fact that these numbers are down. We're almost to the point that we might take in somebody else's prisoner and make a little bit of money out of it. That's the jail report.
Okay. You're back up again. Item number five is the Washington High School soccer field cost.
Well, I've been chasing this thing for a while, and what I've concluded, based on the fact that nobody knows anything, nobody wants to report anything, and the very, I would say, I would go as far as say incompetent, report that was given to us at the last commissioners' meeting, that we've got one of these projects that a small group of people in the community want, and they're outworking people to get what they want, and they don't care what the cost is. They're paying $80,000.00 for 10 or 11 acres of land. That 10 or 11 acres of land, the current market's only worth about $30,000.00. So right away, we're off to a bad start on this particular project. We have a bad site pick, that's gonna be very difficult to get a turf on that site that's gonna be good to play any kind of an impact sport on. So, and I've asked the school board, the manager on my behalf has asked the school system to present to us what they thought this soccer field was gonna cost, and they can't do that. They don't know. So, you know, my question is, who is in charge on this particular item? I've seen these projects over the years start off just like this project, and when it's all over with, we spend a lot of money that nobody wants to admit to, because nobody sat down and did the work to make up a budget. So I'm gonna be watching this project as we go into it, and if people wanna raise money to build a soccer field, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem when I'm looking at $300,000.00 minimum for a soccer field, and it can go a lot higher than that, because we have a lot of do-gooders on this project. Soccer field is not necessary for education. It's a sport, so we need better management in this particular area. And when the budget comes up for next year, I'm gonna want to see what they think this soccer field is going to cost. It has all of the earmarks of a financial disaster.
Well, looking...
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I mean, looking at the numbers last time, this is a voluntary group of citizens that are trying to do the soccer field. I think the only thing that was not in there was the cost of real fancy bleachers and lights. I mean, the preparation of the field was in there. Commissioner Brennan? Commissioner Bryan.
The lights and the bleachers, there's grant money that can be required to have that done, and also grant money that can be required, can be obtained for the field itself, as far as the grass and things like that. So, it takes time to put all this stuff together, they're working really hard on it as we speak, but it's just going to take some time to make sure that all the eyes are dotted and teeth are crossed.
I'm sure that the operating costs, or additional costs, will be in their proposed budget, that we'll see in 2018.
Well, it shouldn't be in their proposed budget, not if the office all volunteer. And from what I've been told, it's going to be done, the soccer field will be built with private funds. The county will not be involved, and only the $80,000 for the land.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, last, they were here at the last meeting, and they did give us a write-up on it, and about the purchase of the property, what they have to do to prepare, they had a, from state lending, they had a estimate on putting it into a field with grass on it. The only thing they asked us for, and that was approved in this year's budget, was $80,000 for the property. And then the complex budget, they gave us a budget of $189,526 at the last meeting. They show funding sources as $80,000, which they got from us. Athletic Department funds, they were going to use $20,000 out of that. Who's the club was going to give them money, and then they have a potential large donor to give them the rest of the money. They gave us individual contributions, and then funds, funding needed by four. So, as you said, and Commissioner Bryan said, they're doing this with a lot of volunteers and funding from them. Their only intention was the $80,000 from us, so I do not expect it, and they made it very clear that they wouldn't be coming back to us and asking for additional funding. They do need a soccer field. It will also allow for another football practice field, keeps them from having to transport the children all over the county. Hopefully, for the kids, I hope it does work out for their benefit.
Commissioner Evans.
Mr. Chairman, I talked to one of the presenters a couple of weeks ago, and going back to the lights, that's something we need to, well, they know they need to keep in mind, because this property backs up to a subdivision in there, and there's also a house kind of in the middle of this property, so providing lighting has the potential of presenting an issue, so they're looking at that. I'm not sure that that cost will factor in, because I don't think they're going to be able to put up lights.
But did they put anything in here for lighting?
No.
I didn't see anything, I didn't even mention lighting today.
That's something that they want to wait at the very end of the project to look at.
Mr. Chairman, isn't those lighting, isn't it about private donations? Didn't you say it was going to be private donations?
That's what we've been told.
By the budget that they presented?
Yes.
Just to give us an update on what they...
All I have to say is, my last question to them last week was, is there, are there any other funds that will be coming from the county? And the answer was no, so when we did the $80,000, we were done, so undone.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is the misuse of county vehicles. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I put this on here just as a stopgap, and I was very surprised that the sheriff's department doesn't have the courtesy to show up to explain the accusations that have been made about the misuse of county vehicles. The sheriff's department has about 18 unmarked cars, and that is unmarked tag, unmarked as to be in the sheriff's department, out of about 60 vehicles. So, there is a very huge opportunity for abuse, and employees have, the sheriff's department have been caught in Pitt County, taking children to school, and they've been caught speeding in Pitt County with children in the vehicle at some pretty high rates of speeds. I think the sheriff should have the courtesy to the public to explain this, rather than to say, "I can do what I want to do," which we know that's not the case at the end of the day, depending on how much courage your county commissioners have in resolving this problem. I, for one, am not willing to pay for a county employee to use county property for personal use. The taxpayers, anybody that's paying taxes, should be outraged that people are using county vehicles for personal use. So, I'm very disappointed that no one from, they're always here, aren't they, until you get them on something, and then they decide they need to go hide somewhere, and that's what they're doing today. So, what I would propose, since they didn't show up, is that we direct the manager to develop a written policy on the personal use of county vehicles, and this will, of course, would come back to us for discussion, and we would decide what that policy is going to be.
Bryan, would you like to address that?
We have a county policy.
Oh, could we have that at the next meeting for discussion?
Yes, sir. I mean, we have a county policy.
Is it in writing?
For county, yes, for county vehicles.
Those are county vehicles? All the vehicles belong to the taxpayers, they're all county vehicles? Mr. Manager, please stop trying to evade me on this issue, because it is not going away.
I'm not trying to evade you, Commissioner Richardson, I'm simply saying, for the vehicles that, for, as the county manager that I have control over, there is a policy that talks about proper use of those vehicles, and if you see any vehicles that are under control of the county manager, that are not being done correctly, please let me know, and we'll address that. However, you and I have had that discussion, I do not have the statutory authority to control what the sheriff does. You have, as a board, have fiscal responsibility, and you can take his money away next budget year, but the statute don't even allow you to do that during the fiscal year, but you do have fiscal control over him, but I don't have any personnel control over him.
This is a problem, this is a process of solving a problem, that I'm into. That's why I say, this is not going away. The process is going to keep right on going until it is solved, because I, people that I talk to in the county don't want to pay for sheriff deputies to use the cars for their own personal family use. That was never the intention. With the sheriff in here hollering about the high mileage on vehicles, and he can't run one, we've got two in here that you guys approved in the, tonight, for 120,000 miles on them, and we're abandoning the car and selling the car. We got, we're letting these things go with low mileages, and we're providing people with Cadillacs to drive, and it's not just the sheriff's department. Let me be perfectly clear about this, there are other departments that have done the same thing. I have not seen anything lately, but I have found vehicles in Pitt County during working hours that went home to have lunch with mom, okay? So, it is going on, and that's why this needs to come back to us at the next meeting, so we can have more discussion on this, and there are a lot of people who have saved a lot of money by putting tracking devices on vehicles, and we need to be talking about that.
And we have vehicle locators on our water department vehicles, and we have, we're in the process of putting vehicle locators on our ambulances. So, we are taking those steps, and we do have control over our vehicles, and anytime that you see one that's not doing what it's supposed to be doing, call me, and we will address it.
And I would invite the public to call me, too.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
On EMS vehicles, it's not, it's to track them for the purposes of a 911 call, for the closest vehicle to be required.
Idiots, idiots.
And you're right, when you look at the statute, we have two-sherry responsibility, we purchased the vehicle. Once it's turned over to the sheriff, which is an elected official, they have the responsibility of using the cars where they should. Now, perception is bad. Cars should not be used for personal use, but it's really up to the sheriff to make that determination, and I'm not condoning it, so don't misunderstand me. And we got, and I agree with a lot of things that are being said, but not everything that's being said. From a law enforcement perspective, we have to be very careful what we do, because we don't want to impact law enforcement in this county. Right now, the crime rate is lower than it is in Pitt County, we have a very good sheriff's department, and good dedicated folks over there, that, so we don't want to impact law enforcement, but we do have to have some type of discussion to take care of some of the issues, because the perception is very bad when you're taking your child or something to school, of what could happen. But that is totally up to the agency involved in the process, or the sheriff's department in this case. And the other thing is, when we talk about unmarked vehicles, when you're in a law enforcement agency, and you're using vehicles in undercover situations, you can't mark the vehicle. You can get an undercover agent killed in that situation. Who's that show up in a car marked Sheriff's Department, New York State Police, Maryland State Police? So, you have to be very, very careful. All I'm saying is, we want to throw out the baby with the waters, we're trying to clear up the situation of a perceived problem with these vehicles. Yes, they're used for things they probably shouldn't be used for, but that's still up to the department head, the sheriff's department.
Commissioner Langley.
Anybody who knows me knows I was at the sheriff's department for 14 years, and I have a soft spot for the sheriff's department, and I really don't make any bones about that. But basically, the things that are happening there now, I simply cannot go along with, and so this is the statement that I am making. As long as I am a commissioner, I will never vote to approve another unmarked vehicle unless it's specifically for the drug unit. And someone has said to me, well, once they get the vehicle, that they can do whatever they want to with it. They can do that one time, because the following year, I'll make another adjustment. But the thing about it is, I'm only one of seven, so we'll just have to wait and see. And seeing, I need everybody to understand this very clearly. When I brought this to light, I was hoping that adjustments would be made, and the sheriff's department would simply say, "We hear what you've said, and we will make the adjustments." But everything I'm hearing is, is how bad the commissioners are, and that I'm putting this stuff out here because I'm running for sheriff, and biggest lie I ever heard in my life, that I'm running for sheriff. I have no desire to run for sheriff, but basically, the only thing I want is for change. Simply change, change the way that you do in business, use the cars for the intended purpose, and you don't have a problem with me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Bryan.
I agree with you, Commissioner Langley, wholeheartedly. I feel the same way as he does about the misuse of vehicles, and do you know, Mr. Manager, whether the sheriff's department has a policy on misuse of vehicles?
I think the sheriff's office has a lot of policies. I'm sure they have a vehicle driving policy, but I don't have a copy. They have lots of policies.
If they do, would you see if you could get a copy of it for us? And if they don't have a policy, ask him to write one.
I'll make that...
Do you think that would, that would clear up the problem?
I'll be glad to ask you.
I think you're putting a fox in the hen house when you do that. I think you're better to let the manager bring back to us the county policy on vehicles at the next meeting, and let's pursue this thing from that standpoint. I'm going to say this, which is going to be a little bit contradictory, I do understand what about, you know, the sheriff's authority over the vehicles, once we give them to them, I understand that. However, the Institute of Government has some opinions that say that there's an awful lot of things that can be done with policy and by the commissioners, so it's not a total authority like the sheriff wants you to believe, by any stretch of the imagination.
Well, I'm going to agree with our manager. I've done some research, I mean, I mean, those cars are not to be abused, but once they are issued to the sheriff, he is the sheriff. But now I want to get off, enough said on that, I just want to say something so the public, for Beaufort County can understand. Our sheriff acted just like a fool yesterday at the parade, and he said he's going to arrest us, and I want to tell him personally, come arrest me. I want to see him arrest me for doing my job. So, I want the public to know, the 48,000 people in Beaufort County, I want to be arrested personally by a bonfire.
Commissioner Evans, do you have?
I just see, you know, I just see it as a personnel issue that needs to be addressed by the sheriff's department. It's just too many things going on, they should make it, they should bring that policy to us and say, "What do y'all think? We appreciate you allocating the money for the vehicles," but there should be some kind of written policy. And again, he is an elected official, and he's got a job to do, and I know it's a tough job, but there should be some kind of personnel policy.
I was on the way to Raleigh Wednesday afternoon, somewhere between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock, and was approaching Interstate 95 right at Wilson on 264, and I was in the left lane, and I was doing 78. I was speeding, but I'd been told that you could go up the tent. So, I was doing 78, and I looked in the mirror, and I could see the little lights on top of the vehicle. I couldn't tell whether it was Highway Patrol, my eyes were not that strong. So, I decided I'd pull over in the right lane. So, I pulled over in the right lane, and here came two cars, they were doing at least 80, maybe 85, and they were Wake County sheriff's car. They were marked. There was, there was nobody in them, other than the two, I'm not sure where they had been and what they had been doing. I guess, I've been told that once you're an officer of the law, you can move in from one county to the next, and you're still an officer of the law in North Carolina, and I guess maybe you can speed and might be able to get away with it. I would hope that there's an internal investigation going on as it relates to the sheriff's department and what took place, and that maybe somebody from the sheriff's department will come to us and report on the findings once they've completed their investigation. One thing I'd like to do is correct Commissioner Richardson's comment on the surplus vehicle. Let me tell you what they are. One of them is a 2,000 Chevrolet van with 132,000 miles, but it is 17 years old. It was damaged in the parking lot, and the repair cost was more than the value of it. The other one was a 2008 Dodge Magnum, and I'm not sure what that was used for, but it was red, and it had 128,000 miles.
Well, let me respond to you on that. Let's look at the years that we have had those cars, and the low mileage that's on those cars, were those cars justified for us to own to begin with? I don't think so.
Well, this comment says they no longer fit the needs of the sheriff's office, so I'm not sure what the red, what the red Dodge Magnum is. But anyway, I think, I think we need to just wait, and we'll get a report from Brian, and maybe someone from the sheriff's department will be at our next meeting to make some report. Item number seven, information requests to the hospital authority board.
Well, I made this information request to Commissioner Busio at the last meeting, and I don't have any information, so when is this going to be forthcoming?
You requested, let me be very clear on this, at the, during the last month's meeting, you made a request, and your motion didn't go anyplace on behalf of the, wasn't even seconded. So, after the meeting, you and I chatted, and you agreed that you would make a personal request to me for certain records, per the, and I'm putting on my chairman of the hospital authority board, per a motion made at a hospital authority board meeting, as a request comes either in writing, or you made your personal request orally, I pass that on to the, our hospital authority attorney. They are working on it, I've received an email on it, they're looking at, you made three requests, one was on invoices between the attorney and the board, the members of the board, you made, where are my notes here? Provide copies of law attorney invoices, provided that to, motion to direct the hospital authority board to provide copies of all minutes of meetings held by this board, the hospital authority board after presentation, last audit, report a summary by the firm, Johnson Jones, and motion to detect, or the Beaufort County Hospital, provide copies of all legal opinions and correspondence, everything written kind. So, that's quite a lot of information requested, the attorneys are working on it, you'll be getting a letter shortly, addressing your request.
Let me point out one thing, under the open meetings law and information requests in North Carolina, I, as a commissioner, can make the request...
can make the request for the information on behalf of this board. The board doesn't have to second it, and the board doesn't have to vote on it, because it's public information. You know, and I just, I just find I have this feeling that there's foot dragging going on over there.
Well, you're making an accusation again. You're very.
It's not an accusation. It's a statement. I've been asking for stuff for six months. You've been hiding, dragging your feet.
I'm not going to get into discussion with you.
Okay, we're down to item number eight. High commissioners are elected, and you're up again, Commissioner Richardson.
About two, three years ago, it's in the minute share, the date, Commissioners Buzio and Waters were appointed by this board to take a look into the way that commissioners are elected. And what I'm hearing from the Republican Party is one place, is that there's been an agreement made among the commissioners and the, some powers in the community, and everybody, if you will. That's a poor choice of words, but a lot of people that we're going to change the way that we elect commissioners. I have made inquiries. Well, how are we going to start electing commissioners? What is the methodology in this? How are we going to do this? And I'm not getting answers, and the reason this is on the agenda is so Commissioners Waters and Buzio can report to us what's going on with the way we're changing the way that we're electing commissioners.
Why don't you start?
I'll start. I guess it was back in 2014 or 2015, the board confirmed Commissioner Waters at that time, now chairman, and myself to look at the voting situation in the county, which we did. And then, a lot of information we obtained. And what we were looking at is changing the voting, going to district voting. And one of the things we wanted to do is, on the information, is to get the board to approve going to the federal judge and the Department of Justice, Civil Rights Division. And we gave a brief report at one of the board meetings, I guess, three years ago, three and a half years ago, and we did not have the sufficient votes to move forward on that. So we, that was the end of the study. Now, and it's come to my attention, I don't know who's made what agreement with who that you're talking about, but it's not one of these dark secrets, and I think it may have been pushed by the Republican Club, I'm not sure. They're now passing around a petition to go to district voting, similar to what the state does with the district reps and the representatives and the senators, similar to what the government does. Probably maybe along the lines of the school board districts, which have been approved by the Department of Justice and Civil Rights Division, and the federal judge that was involved in the previous lawsuit on the voting. So I even have a copy of the petition that they're passing around, but I'm not aware of any commissioner on this board that was involved in initiating that. So maybe you were, but I'm not aware of anybody else that was. Commissioner Waters, anything you want to add to?
Well, I think one of the things that we found out very quickly is after we met and talked with Kelly Hopkins, and met with some other people, is that nobody encouraged us to make a change. Pretty much was it, is that it had been tried, and we'd had, I think, two or three different commissions, and we had spent money on it. And then when it came back to the commissioners, the commissioners would not vote for it. So I personally pretty well dropped the idea, because I didn't want to see the county spend $200,000 or $250,000 hiring law firms and doing more task work, and then coming up with the same answer. So it was pretty well dropped after talking with different people. It has surfaced in the past six months concerning doing the petition, and I don't know whether, Keith, you would want to comment on that or not, but if you would step to the podium, I'll give you that opportunity to talk to us about the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Richardson, to address your concerns, there's been no collusion meetings or anything otherwise with any of the commissioners here, outside of asking them if they would choose to sign that petition. There's been no backroom deals, no backroom meetings, nothing. This idea comes from the Beaufort County Republican Party. We hear many complaints from the citizenry that says they're not satisfied with the current system of limited voting. With that said, about a year ago, we started taking steps. We did address the commission back then briefly through Commissioner Waters and Buzio. They did their thing, nothing came of it, and the party felt like they still wanted to move forward with it. We've had several meetings with Reverend Moore, who was the plaintiff in the case that got us to limited voting, and Reverend Moore had indicated he would also prefer to go to districts, which was his original intention. The party felt like that the best way to do this was to speak to the General Assembly. We spoke to Commissioners, I'm sorry, to Representative Speciale and Representative Boswell. Both of them had indicated if we would bring forth a petition with a sufficient number of signatures, that they would present that to the General Assembly and seek to change the voting method from their powers that they have to make that happen. And that is what this petition seeks to do. It does not delineate where the districts will be. It does not delineate anything above saying we want to change from limited voting to representative districts. And I'll answer any questions anybody has on it.
Commissioner Richardson, do you have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I have a statement when he finishes.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody have a question of Keith?
I'd like to make a statement.
Well, while he's up there, and then I'll come back to you. Anybody have a?
I'm going to make a statement, too.
Well.
I'm going to finish.
Anybody have anything?
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Just to add to what Keith said, I personally have met with Reverend Moore on two occasions, and he basically told me the same thing that he did Keith, is that he would support districts very similar to the school districts. He prefers nine, just like the school. And I've also met with one of the other organizations in the county that was involved.
NAACP?
The NAACP. And I met with their board just to have an open discussion. Here again, I'm not in favor of spending taxpayer money to go to court to try to change it. And that has been my whole purpose of trying to talk with different groups. I've also had, I've not met with a Democrat, Democratic Party, but I have met with some of the individual Democrats that are in leadership position, and I've gotten encouragement from them also. I realize that there are people that like the way we've been doing it. But I think at the same time, it's something that constantly, I have people all the time ask me if I'm on the city council here in Washington. And, you know, who do I represent? And I try my best to represent all 48,000 citizens here in Beaufort County. Now I'm going to start.
Well, my, my statement is, I really do appreciate you meeting with Reverend Moore and the Democrats, and I thought I was one of the most, strongest Democrats there was in the county. I really thought I was. We hadn't met, being, I just learned about this tonight. But this is not Reverend Moore's suit. It's the people's, and he can't change it unless the people say it want to be changed. And I get sick and tired, and I hate to say this publicly, if, Mr. Richardson, and I'm not saying I want this to happen, but if Mr. Richardson would lay down and die tonight, you wouldn't hear no more about limited voting. It's designed, they don't care about me getting elected, they don't care about Jerry. It's Mr. Richardson. So I hope you will join with us whenever they want to go to Richmond to fight a consent order, where we can sit here, because it's going to cost a heck of a lot of money.
He said it all.
Evans, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, when I became Commissioner five years ago, Chairman Langley was gracious enough to set up a committee to study limited voting. And I talked with Stan Etheridge about what happened in his committee, and got his notes and tapes on what they did, and we put together a committee that looked long and hard at it. And we come up with a plan that I thought was good, and it was agreeable with our committee, that when four people ran, you got two votes. And when three people ran, you got one vote. So that would give you some options. And I talked to Commissioner Booth about what we, okay, he was sitting on the committee, and he said that he cannot support, even though he did support bringing it back to the board. He said he couldn't support that, and said, because why should we give up anything that we've worked so hard for? And I understand that, Mr. Booth, I do. And so then we started getting into how much money it was going to cost to fight this system, because I was told just as soon as the board voted on it and it passed, a lawsuit going to be thrown down, and it would probably cost between $300,000 and $500,000 before it was all over. And I weren't prepared to spend that much money, Beaufort County money. So I was in the same situation you two were.
Well, here again, I don't think any of us want to spend that kind of money on any kind of lawsuit. But does that answer, does that give you some information?
Well, let me make my statement, and then I'll give you some information. The, you know, limited voting is the best method we have. That doesn't mean that I'm going to go out and get myself nailed to a cross over limited voting, but there's no question that the minorities that have been elected through limited voting have been eminently successful. Blacks have representation, and guess what? There were no Republicans on this board until we had limited voting.
Exactly.
One of the problems that I have, and I can't get an answer to, is if you go to districts, how are you going to vote? Is everybody, you're going to run geographically by zip code, and then somebody, everybody in the county has to vote for you? Or are you going to be limited to be voting just in that district? If you're limited to voting just in that district, you're in worse shape than you are now, because you're only going to get to vote for one commissioner. Right now, you get to vote for two. Every two years, you get to at least vote again. So don't go jumping onto this until somebody can explain to you how the new system is going to work. And the Republican Party has not been able to do that up until now. And I'll say one more thing, go on the public record with this. I'm not supporting any district system that does not provide for the chairman and the vice chairman to run at large across the entire county. Now you've got three votes.
I agree with that.
Does anyone else have anything they want to say? Okay. All right, we're down to item number nine, and Commissioner Richardson, you're back up again.
Gee.
This is on tax refund explanation. We're going to have to label the section that we're in right now, Commissioner Richardson's agenda.
Well, a lot of things that need to be resolved in the county. Tax refund explanations. We, you guys voted for it tonight, I don't vote for it, but there was two items on the consent agenda.
Nonprofit.
Huh?
Nonprofit.
There's nonprofits next.
No, 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 you're right. You're in the right.
Tax refund, go to the one above that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. We voted tonight to refund tax money, and I would estimate at least $1,000, maybe more than that. And there's not a single commissioner sitting here that can tell you why we made those refunds. And what I want the commissioners to do is to institute a policy that when the, now there's two departments that bring in tax refunds. There's the assessors department and the collectors department, and they have to come to us separately. And what I want us to do is direct these two departments to state in three or four words why they're making this refund. Because we've been voting to make these refunds now for years and years and years, and unless I get on the phone and make a special request, I don't know why you're refunding this money. So is that asking too much to identify the property by PIN number, that's the 10-digit PIN number, and why you made this refund? Why you're asking for this refund? Excuse me.
When, would you like to address part of it?
And I apologize, Commissioners, I just came from my house, and I'm dealing with a sick child, so I apologize for that, not being dressed and like.
But before you get started, how about starting on the refunds as it relates to motor vehicles, where somebody trades one and they've already paid, or they sell it, and they go back in, you know, they're paying in advance? That's one of the refunds.
Yeah, there's a bunch of reasons for refunds. There's a whole host of them.
Well, that's, okay.
Okay, I'll start with the collections side first, and then I will address that, Commissioner. Basically, on my side, it's a straight overpayment. Somebody has paid the bill twice, whether it's a mortgage company, or the person has paid it twice, or we've garnished and they've paid it, and the garnishment comes in. So it's basically a straight overpayment from our department. And I don't have a problem in stating that on what I send over for mine. Now, with a motor vehicle, and this is dealt with more with Bobby's office than my office, but basically, somebody trades a vehicle in, or turns a tag in, and it generates a refund because they prepay it for a year. So that's where that refund comes from, from the motor vehicle. And I believe that comes out of Bobby's office from the assessor's side for the motor vehicles, because it's dealt with through his office. I hope I was able to answer your question.
Well, I mean, how do you feel about giving us a reason, when you bring a refund list in here, identifying the property or the person as best you can, and then saying, you know, I refunded it because the double pay from the individual, or double pay from the mortgage company, or whatever?
I don't have a problem in that, Commissioner. I don't have a problem with that. I have no problem in stating this is what generated the overpayment. And I haven't talked to Anita with the Finance Department or whatever, but if it's just a straight, it's been paid twice, I don't think that's a problem for me to give an explanation for that. Any other questions? I mean, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have any.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When, couldn't you just as easily describe that on paper instead of you having to come in every month and?
Yes, sir. I can.
Put it on paper for, so we could have it on hand?
Yes, sir.
And put it down where we can understand.
Yes, sir. I can do that.
Okay.
Did you want to add anything, Bobby? Do you mind stepping? Well, just stay there when you get there, Bobby, because you're the next one.
I knew you won't forget that. Your motor vehicles are generated out of Raleigh. If we turn a tag in, it's generated out of Raleigh. How much refund? What the number of months? It's a prorate. So if I turn my vehicle in in September, I've got three months left, three or four months left, prorated. They give us how much should be prorated, and we do it, we bring it over here. Regular refunds, I kind of go along with Mr. Richardson on that. Before we put the new system in, I believe I brought refunds to you every month with an explanation of what the refund was, if it was a mobile home, billed twice. I brought up a reason, and I think it should be that way. I think we need to, when they come over to you, we need an explanation, because I think sometimes refunds get out of hand. I agree with that. I've been saying that ever since our new system come in, so I'll tell you where I feel about refunds. So I think we need an explanation on those. Any other questions on that? I don't have any.
Yeah, if the commissioners want to look on pages 56 and 57, this is the printout that we get from the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles.
Right.
On the refunds.
And that's showing a prorate on that.
Any questions? Anything else on it? Okay, well, you're standing right up there. Item number 10, list of nonprofits and others who pay solid waste fees, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I got your list, got your piece of paper that went with this, that gives some codes and some list or something, and my question is, where did I get the list so I can look at it?
I can, I have the list in here of everything that I printed, that's on this sheet. It comes out to, but where I went back and started from, I put up this 2016 solid waste that we had. We had 21,000. We had 21,940. 217, we had 23,470. That's 1,535, if I'm adding straighten right. That would be about the amount that I would think that was correct. But anyway, we went in and all these other ones you see, we ran a report, so I asked him to go back in and run a report just on churches and schools. Anything had a church name, anything had a school name. And we come up with about 140 more. So that's making us 1,670 more than we had in 2016. And I think that would, we're still releasing some, we're still billing some, so.
Well, could you bring us at the next meeting, a list of the additions to the list where we put the nonprofits on? I want the list that has been added in the last year or so, when we discovered that we weren't billing nonprofits. And then I'm going to come back to you with another request after that, that's going to be bigger. But I mean, I've been working on this thing now for eight or nine months, and I, you know, I'm not getting anywhere.
Well, I don't think anybody in here wants it to be finished any more than I have. We put in a lot of time before we billed, so that's why I'm thinking the 1,500 was somewhere in the range that we should be billing. But we've put in a lot of time in the last few months trying to put something together. We would come up with a correct answer. And so I broke everything down, and I can bring anything that you want.
Can you bring that list of nonprofits that have been added, or people that have been added, since the commissioners directed that people who are not entitled, we didn't feel were entitled, to be given a waiver on tipping fees? If they'd be added to the payee list?
The only thing I guess I could bring is the people that are on a dumpster, because outside of that, we should be billing everyone.
No, I want the list of people that have been added as a result of the change in policy that the commissioners initiated about a year ago.
Okay, that would be anybody that was put in on 17, that was not on 16.
That's correct.
All right. I can do that.
Bobby, on the email that we got here from the systems engineer, on page 80.
Right.
If I understand that correctly, there was 1,333, plus the additional that, you're saying we're up to about 1,500 total?
That's correct.
Okay.
About 1,670 is what I added today.
1,670.
Right. And I think that's going to be really more than we, I think some of those are doubled up.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
And we added item number 11, that's on the FEMA flood map update, Commissioner Richards.
All right, this is my last item, so y'all breathe a sigh of relief. The FEMA flood maps were supposed to have been updated, we should have had them a year and a half or so ago. This has been a long, ongoing project. And I spoke with an individual who did tell me that FEMA had admitted that they have dropped the ball in timeliness on getting these maps out. The reason these maps are important is because we have a lot of people who will save a lot of money when the new maps come out. I'm talking about people who will save $2,000 and $3,000 in FEMA flood cost each year. And this thing is going on and on and on and on. And what, the maps are there, the review process has been completed. What I think we should do, and we need the board to get behind this, we need to approach our elected officials and talk to them about the foot dragon that's going on with FEMA in getting these maps released, so that our people can get these benefits. And what has happened is, the 100-year flood took place in 2013. Nobody knew what it was, 100-year flood or 1,000-year flood, they called it 100-year flood. Well, 100 years passed, and the flood did not repeat itself. So there are places in this county, the flood level, the base flood level is dropping three feet. There are a lot of people, I did a job for a client the other day, he's completely out of the flood plain, and he's got a basement in his house. He was going to, he is paying $4,000 a year until these new maps come out. I mean, there's a lot of money to be saved by our citizens if we can get behind this and make some contacts with elected officials and let them get behind FEMA. So I would make that as a motion, if the chairman would entertain a motion, but whatever you guys feel like we should, I don't think we should sit here, though.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We had a motion and a second, surely. It's democracy. Brian, do you have any, have you had any feedback from the discussion on the update, as far as the timeframe is concerned?
My only feedback on it was from NCEM, which handles the local issue, and that they had, they anticipated getting all their paperwork completed by summertime to submit to FEMA. And then FEMA would take about six months. So what he said in his email was, earliest they anticipated it coming back, having effective maps, would be early 19. I had a conversation with the folks at the association the other day at one of the steering committee meetings, and expressed Commissioner Richardson's concerns, and they said they would look at it, because obviously it impacts coastal counties.
Okay, any, yes, Commissioner Evans?
As Hood said, it's a big issue as far as real estate. I was one of the agents today. As you go in, you go on the website, and you pull up the flood maps, and it shows now, people say, okay, I don't want to be in that area. I mean, it's very expensive. Now those houses are starting to sit. Now we keep adding time to them. Now we've got mold, we've got other things created in. So if we could get these flood maps and get this insurance down, I think you'd see, especially downtown, this city area, it's kind of sitting in a bowl anyway, that we could, but we need those maps. We've heard about them, we've told people they're coming, but until they're here and adopted, the insurance companies are not going to change that rate, obviously.
My understanding is the maps have been made. We pull them up and use them all the time to show people, this is what it's going to be like when the New Deal comes out. And there's some drastic changes there. But maps are done. This is a bureaucratic thing at this point. It's not a matter of we have to do hydrology studies, and we have to do all these calculations, and all this kind of stuff to make a map. The maps are made. It's a matter of pushing the bureaucrats to go ahead and do their job and get this thing over with. So I think that probably what should happen is if, that we should direct the manager, along with whatever commissioners want to participate, and I would be glad to do whatever I can do, to contact Walter Jones' office and the two senators' offices, and let's get the ball rolling. And we have a motion and a second, so would you be willing to include, I would be, that's what I would do if the second is willing to include what I just said in the motion.
Absolutely.
I think it's more at a state level, Commissioner Richardson, because my understanding is there's a mandatory six-month notification from FEMA's side that's in statute. They have to, they have to put it out there for six months before they can enact it. And my understanding is it's the state putting all their stuff together to send to FEMA. And then once FEMA gets it, they have a six-month statutory that they can't enact it. There has to be a six-month timeframe from the federal side. I think it's more at the state level.
Then you think we should start with our local representatives?
I would.
Okay. And let's put both of them in there.
Okay.
So we can, so we can let the good times roll, because probably what's going to happen is these guys are going to bounce, being bureaucrats, they're going to bounce it back and forth between the Fed and the state. And they're going to try to cover each other's back.
Any other comment before we take a vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, and I guess the amended part, which you agreed to? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The vote was unanimous. We're a little behind schedule, so we're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll be back right after the break. We'll move into the items for discussion at this time. Number one is the adoption of the EMS contract. Carney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. In coming into my role in emergency services and evaluating different things, Operations Chief Mercer, one of his things he had started was a review of our EMS contract. General statute gives counties authority and responsibility in providing EMS for the county. You know, we have our EMS service, but part of that service is not just county trucks, it's other departments that operate in our county as well. And so we needed a uniformed contract that would be with each of those. Some of our contracts are as old, current contracts now are as old, five, six, even seven years old. And they're slightly different as we look at each department. So we continued that review, Glenn, myself, Commissioner Buzzio, and we carried that to the EMS Oversight Committee. We were able to flush some things out, go back and work on it again, and we have now our final draft that was approved by the EMS Oversight Committee to bring to the board to be a blanket EMS contract to be used with all agencies. And from there, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Buzzio, or answer any questions you may have.
Why don't we?
Oh, okay.
Turn it over.
Yeah, Carney is correct. We worked on this long, for a long time, put a lot of time into it. We have a consistent contract for the nonprofits, EMS on nonprofits. And this was put to a vote in front of the EMS Oversight Committee, which unanimously approved this contract. So we're asking for approval by this board, so that we can implement it immediately.
Any questions of Carney or Commissioner Buzzio?
You said the board budgeted on that announcement? Yes.
The EMS Oversight Committee, yes, sir.
One of the things that, is this in here? Because I've read the contract, but I don't remember the details. We have the right to audit all their operations.
It says a copy of the most recent financial statements, well, that says refunds.
If I may, each year, the EMS Oversight Committee does look at their budgets and recommends approval of the budget.
And if I may answer your question even further, on training operations, operations of the department, there are specific things in here it does ask for that are to be relayed to our office. And so with that, it gives us the ability, if need be, to go in and ask for those things.
But I'm thinking more of the root of all evils, money.
Right. And when it comes to money, one thing we did specifically, the county commissioners, Manager Alligood led me in this decision that came several years ago. If you look in what would be of this, I think it is, starting at page three of my contract, down at the bottom in number 10, it's verbiage that was adopted by the county commissioners. And it says, if funds received from the county are $75,000 or more, here are things that are required, verification of IRS 501(c)(3) or similar, copy of most recent CPA, a budget on how the public funds will be spent, and verification of the current annual budget. If you look on the next page, it identifies if funds received from the county are less than 75. It asks for one thing slightly different if they're receiving less money than that.
But I believe there's a provision in there that attempts to separate the source of funding. For instance, if I remember right, and don't hold me to this, the funds that are collected as a result of making runs are separate funds.
Okay, I think I can answer your question. In our previous contracts or drafts of contracts, we asked to be able to audit funds that receive taxpayer money. And so if they had a fundraising account, it really didn't, it didn't show an ability for us to look at an account that did not have taxpayer money. Under this contract, it opens, if you receive money from the county period, then your books are open to record.
And that includes the revenue from making runs and the revenue from fundraising?
That's everything. And that actually goes beyond our contract. That's actually, Manager Alligood, help me word, that comes from its public record, when we look at those funds.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion if we prove.
Got a motion by Commissioner Buzzio, and a second by Commissioner Bren. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote unanimously, Katie. All right. Number two is the bid approval for HMA 2015 elevations. Lisa?
Good evening, Commissioners. I have Chris Hilbert with me from Holland. And you have in your package the bid tab. There were three properties that there were bids submitted for. And you see the three bids that were awarded. And the consent agenda, if you see at the bottom, we're asking that we get approval for the recommended contractor for each house to be elevated as presented, the bids presented, meet the parameters established by FEMA, and they file within the authorized budgets for each project. And just a side note, this particular time, these are all three local bidders, local contractors.
Any questions of Lisa?
Please.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bren.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. All those are, I'm sorry.
I have a question. What's the role of Holland and Associates?
Holland is our consulting firm that helps us, actually, we, in our office, what I do is I put the grant proposal together, get all the information together, then I work together with Holland to actually submit that grant. Then once the grants are approved or funded, then Holland works with us to coordinate the actual project, the construction of the project, the raising of the house, the whole, from start to finish. So they are our consulting and engineer firm.
So if the contractor is behind schedule, is it Holland's?
Both of us. It's both of us. I go out and try to lay my eyes on the properties, you know, going through the stages. Chris does the same. They have Gary Miller, who's in their office, he does the same. And if they're behind, then I get with Chris and we talk about why they're behind. Sometimes it's reasons they can't help. Sometimes it's weather, especially this time of the year. Sometimes, what, something, that sometimes they'll start taking out a foundation and find something they didn't expect. So we talk about it. I talk about it with Holland. Holland talks about it with the contractor, and we try to resolve it. So it's a partnership.
Is Holland and Associates paid by percentage, or?
Holland is paid out of the grant. There's a soft cost fee, and then there's an engineering fee, and that all is included in the budget for the proposal for the grant when it's submitted. Yes, sir.
So if the project falls behind schedule, and we have to learn, do they get added percentage? Do they make any more money?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No. The only, and we, I don't think we've ever actually had to do this, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have talked about if a contractor is repeatedly behind, or behind and not showing effort to bring it in line, about charging that cost back to the contractor for the delay. I don't think we've ever actually had to do that, not in this county.
You have liquidating damages in the contract?
We do.
Okay.
I'm just checking to see if the county, it costs the county an additional funding when there's a delay.
The project's a fixed cost, so whatever we charge within the project is.
A fixed cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fixed. We don't ask for additional money unless there's a significant construction increase that we didn't foresee, you know, within the project.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Lisa.
Which, if you want me, once you finish this, the next one is just what he just said.
Chris, I know you said there's a fixed cost, and since I've been here, I hadn't, I can't remember that I've seen this, and this is one of these, one of these projects that the owner pays a percentage also. And it's one of my pet peeves, I always ask this, you know that. How often do y'all have change orders?
Okay. I'd say change orders occur on probably about 50% of the jobs that we do.
And I can't remember, we never seen them come back to us for approval, so y'all, that's some of your soft money that you have.
Well, yes, there's usually, these bids are below the actual prices that, you know, they budget in. And you guys approved a contract award policy at the beginning of it that allows for change orders up to like 10% to just be approved administratively, you know, so if something, you know, major came through.
Is it something that homeowners have to agree with also? Is it something that homeowners have to agree with also?
Absolutely. These three awards that are in front of you right now are, 10% of the costs have to be, you know, provided by the homeowners at the time of the contract. And they've already provided some money for some of the soft costs, some of the upfront survey and engineering, things like that. So, every change order that would happen, the homeowner would have to kick in, and the homeowner has to sign every change order that happens.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the bids, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you. You're still up. Item number, item number three is the owner contributed funds. Lisa?
This particular house is on the VOA road. The homeowner, we have been trying for several years to get her property elevated. She has received significantly repeated flood damage. We submitted her home in a grant package, that grant package was approved and funded, and in Matthew, she received additional flooding. So, what she agreed to do, this is not going to cost the county any more money, she agreed and wrote a check, which has already been received by the county, deposited, cleared, for the amount of additional funds that had to be put up to complete her project. So, that's what she did. And so, we just need to get the commissioners' permission to spend her money, because it's coming through, it's funneling through the county. But that is why she contributed that money. It was not an initial, the ones prior to that, that grant required the homeowners to deposit 10% of their costs. This was a 100% project, this particular one. But the initial damages are what, I mean, the damages after the initial contract are what caused her to have to put this money up, so.
Okay, if there's, is there any questions?
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Booth, second by Commissioner Buzzio. Any other comment? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The vote was unanimous. Thank you. We're down to item number four, the ambulance franchise approval for IBX Medical Transport. Glenn?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I appreciate you allowing me to present tonight. In the October meeting of the Oversight Committee, we met, we reviewed a portfolio for Interbanks Ambulance Transport Service, and it was unanimous vote within the Oversight Committee to allow it in the function. We presented it for the first reading last meeting, and we're preventing for second reading and also decision tonight. I have Mr. Hester here, the President of the company, he's willing to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any questions of any of the commissioners? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. They were both at the same time. Okay, Commissioner Bren made the motion, and Booth, did you second?
Yeah, I seconded. Go ahead.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. unanimous. Thank you, Glenn.
It'll work.
Go to work.
Okay, item number five, Christina, is the awarding of the debris grinding contract.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this agenda item is asking for your approval to award to Chavander Trucking. This is, an RFP was put out in October. This is to do the grinding of the vegetative debris that is received at the county landfill off of Old Hawkins Beach Road. Chavander Trucking previously held the contract, so they are familiar with the project. There are no issues with that. There were two bids received, and Chavander Trucking was the low bid. So, we're asking, the reason it's coming to you for approval is because it is a multi-year contract. It's a three-year contract with two options to renew one additional years. This is just to provide more of a routine basis, our contracted manager at the landfill, as well as this contractor, to work together, and it just seems to work best to have a multi-year contract.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, second this time by Commissioner Bren. Question. All those in favor of the contract, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you. Item number six, the Aurora Solid Waste Convenience Site Lease Agreement Renewal. Brian?
Chairman, Members of the Board, you currently have a lease agreement with the town of Aurora for the operation of the convenience site on town property number SR 1921. That contract ends the end of this year. You have in front of you a renewed, proposed lease for three-year agreement for that same site. The lease rate is $8,240.40 per year, and it matches the lease rate that you paid Republic for the convenience sites there.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Bren, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Now, is there any questions, comments? We'll take a vote. All those in favor of the contract or the lease, raise your right hand. Think it was unanimous.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Item number seven, the purchase of the rural property, the Horn Building on North Market Street. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, as you're aware, negotiations to purchase the Horn Building, which is 223, 225, and 227, North Restless Street, has been finalized by the county attorney. The seller did agree to reduce the sales price by the estimated cost of the needed repairs that you received based on the inspection report. So, the final purchase price is $228,000. Pending approval, the board tonight, that closing is scheduled for tomorrow. You have a copy of the offer and purchase contract in the agenda, as well as a budget amendment that takes care of transferring those funds to do that. We recommend your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the purchase? Commissioner Evans, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. Discussion, any?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Brian, in that contract, I know we have as much knowledge as there is on a building like that, is there any provision in there to furnish monies if we run across something that we don't know about?
No. No, sir. And I wouldn't necessarily say there are substantial damages to that building. I mean, I think there were some things that, in the.
No maintenance, more than anything.
Yeah, it is. It's more, it's more age and maintenance. But no, I mean, there isn't anything in there that says, oops, we forgot something you owe us. No, sir. It's cleansed out.
There was an inspection done on that building.
Yes.
Yes.
Who did the inspection?
Grant T.
Grant T. does commercial.
I was trying to think of his name, First Flight.
First Flight.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions of the property purchase? Okay, all those in favor of the purchase, raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, vote was six, one. All right, we're down to item number eight, which is the hospital authority dissolution. Commissioner Buzzio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we talked about it, discussion we had at the last meeting was about dissolving the hospital authority. And at our hospital authority board meeting, there was a number of motions made, but one motion was that the board authorized, that the board recommended to the county that the hospital authority board be dissolved. And going along with that, there's three motions that I'd like to make based upon the, what the hospital authority has said. As of, but before I do make those, the financial review is completed as of September. He's now completing October, November, so we'll have a financial review as of September and discussions with our Chief Financial Officer of the hospital authority. There's been no violations, any financial violations. The other thing is, CFO has, is in the process of comparing all the funding in and out of the hospital authority since the exception of 2011. He's up to September of this year. He's also, will be completing to the end of November, so that's what you'll have. We currently, as of the end of October, we have $4,536,947.42 in the excluded liability account. And in the professional services escrow account, we have $13,478.24. So, that, some ways in that neighborhood will be the money that's being transferred. And those details, we worked out with our attorney and whoever the county designates and our Chief Financial Officer. The three motions that I would like to make in the following order, and this chairman, we can vote on them one at a time or three?
I would prefer that we do them one at a time, so go with your first motion.
Okay. The following three motions would allow Beaufort County of, Beaufort County Board of Commissioners to accept the recommendation of hospital authority, to dissolve the hospital authority and transfer the funds to be used for the good of the county residents. Motion number one, and then I'll stop. The hospital authority recommends to the county commissioners to dissolve the hospital authority board. A little explanation, in such an event, the hospital board has authorized the chair and agents of the hospital board to take those steps necessary and reasonably appropriate to accomplish the transition, again, working, that's not part of the motion, but working with the county. So, again, I'll repeat the first motion. The hospital authority recommends to the county commissioners to dissolve the hospital authority board. That's my motion.
Well, we, you made the motion, will you second the motion?
We do. Okay, I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, now we're open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There's a lot of discussion on this particular item. Commissioner Buzzio, do you have a set of minutes that have been approved by your board requesting that the hospital authority board be dissolved?
We have the minutes are being finalized by the attorney and his staff, and, that's my answer.
You don't have minutes that have been approved by your board requesting that this board dissolve the authority board? That's what you just said.
We have the minutes, but we just haven't.
They're not minutes until they've been approved by your board.
I understand that, Mr. Commissioner.
I was at that particular board meeting, and what I heard at that board meeting was, your board authorized you to confer with the commissioners about the future of the authority board.
No, that was not the motion, you know that.
Gee, we hear different things, don't we? Well, it was filmed, so there won't be much debate about that.
Well, you were sound asleep at most of the meetings, so.
Asleep, I'm worth two of you.
You know, point of order, Mr. Chairman, it's very sad, an elected official, the only way he can express himself is by using derogatory terminology. It shows a complete lack of professionalism, it shows a complete lack of knowledge, it shows a lack of profound thought.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that, it is a farce for someone to bring to the commissioners things that he claims that his board has approved that are in order, that are not in order. We only have his word for this. His board has not approved those minutes. Until his board approves the minutes, he can't move forward, because I was at the meeting, the meeting was filmed, and I heard different things than what Commissioner Buzzio is representing.
The motion was made pending positive outcome of Washington Jones and Grant's reference financial review. Board recommends to the county commissioners to dissolve the hospital authority board. In such event, the board authorized the chair and agents of the board to take those steps necessary and reasonably appropriate to accomplish the transition. The motion was made by Suzanne Gray, seconded by Commissioner Frankie Waters, and one opposing, and the vote carried seven to one.
Commissioner Buzzio, do you have a financial statement for your board that has been approved by your board? No, you don't. What's going on here is a fast shift on the county. Now, I'm gonna point out another reason. One of the reasons, I'm opposed to this, I'm totally opposed to this. The county put into place a structure when they, we gave the hospital Dividend, that would protect the taxpayers of Beaufort County from long-term unknown risk liabilities. Once this board is dissolved, the final nail has been driven into the coffin by the, by the present board to strip the county of those protections. And was pointed out in this very room three years ago, that until the last person who was born at that hospital reaches the age of majority, so that they can determine whether they're going to sue you or not, there's still liability out there. When you do this, you are putting every taxpayer in Beaufort County is assuming an unknown risk. No businessperson in his right mind would ever do what is being proposed. The simple thing to do, and one other argument that I have on this, an authority board, you have to have a hospital to have an authority board. Guess what? We had an authority board because we had a hospital. When this board is dissolved, it cannot be recreated. Everything is on the county's back. You need to keep this trust fund intact, you need to keep the authority board for the future long-term benefit of this county. Now, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna labor on here for a minute. Debt, yes, I know you don't like hearing it, because common sense doesn't go very far with this crowd. Debt is an evil thing. You haven't seen a debt crisis in this country since the 1930s. I've got a letter in my office that I found the other day. In 1936, a lawyer wrote a letter to a lawyer in Beaufort County and said, from Chicago, and said, "I've advised my client that you're willing to take $150 for the $10,000 bond." That's what can happen to you. All of the improvements, everything looks great on the hill over there. All of those improvements that Viden is making is with borrowed money. All of that huge complex they have in Greenville is with borrowed money. What could possibly go wrong? Now, the lease on this hospital, Viden can't take title for another 25 years. They could walk from this lease anytime they want to. What happens if you go through another financial crisis? Now, I'm talking about a crisis, which a lot of experts are saying is looming, and we suddenly have to go out and find somebody to come into this hospital and run it. And you can do that. There are plenty of people that you can enter into. If Viden walks, you can, you can contract with somebody else. That four and a half million dollars will be necessary seed money. There's not another county that I know of in the United States that is in the position of safety that Beaufort County is in over this issue. Look at what happened in Bellhaven. They did not have the financial money to protect their hospital and keep it after they had made a really bad decision with Viden. And Viden shut it down and destroyed the building. There is no competition, and this board voted to support that, by the way. You don't need to be taking these unnecessary risks. We are in a very strong position. To say that the economy's gonna keep going forever, only a fool would say that. Look what happened in the 30s. When you're out of money, you're gonna be out of money, everybody else is gonna be out of money, but if you're sitting on four and a half million dollars, that's, that's in secured safe funds, you're king of the hill. To take this money, dissolve the authority board, and roll this back into, into the Beaufort County coffers so that we can spend it for some of the fine projects we've been spending it for, like four and five times the value of real estate, is foolish. I'm voting against this, and I advise commissioners that want to protect the people of Beaufort County and want to protect the welfare and the health of Beaufort County, to keep this trust fund and keep this authority board, because neither one of them can be recreated. Once they vanish, they have vanished. It is financially irresponsible to propose what this man is proposing.
That's not a order. We're gonna lay anybody else's chance to, everybody's entitled for comment. Commissioner Evans?
I was at the same meeting Hood's talking about. The only, once the motion was made to dissolve, there was one, only one person I heard voted against it. So, as far as I was concerned, it was, the recommendation went forward to send it to, they wanted to see it dissolved. The second thing I want to say is that I'm trying to figure out who spent $40 million in Beaufort County, other than Viden, since they've come here. So, I mean, they're very vested in the community, so I think they stepped up and are really helping Beaufort County, so I'd like to see the board dissolve.
Commissioner Langley?
No.
You were at the meeting.
I was at the meeting, I served on the board, and, you know, one of the things that I was confident about was, the money was to be retained to cover any of our. I was confident about was the money was to be retained to cover any of your trailing liabilities, and one of the things that we learned, that all of those liabilities were pretty much cleaned up, and that was my purpose for voting to dissolve the board because there were no lingering liabilities. And so the, the vote was, was it seven one, eight one?
Seven one.
Seven one, in favor of dissolving. So I still stand supporting it.
Commissioner Booth, do you have any comment?
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, but I always trusted, trusted board that was there. I mean, that's the reason you're there, is to manage what we send you to do, so I, I, but the only question I have is why, why are we dissolving it? What, what's the purpose of dissolving it?
The, the history, as I understand it, in talking with Jim Christman, who has been on there since day one and used to be the county's chief financial officer.
He's not been on there since day one.
Uh, but anyway, if he has not been on there, you know, I stand corrected. He said, and along with the attorneys, I mean, we've had recommendations from the attorneys, that there's no reason for us to keep it open, that we have the, that it can be dissolved. So we, we had it discussed, and we put the vote off, and we got more information, and, you know, it was, it was discussed. And, you know, I feel confident that that's doing the right thing. There's a lot of people that said there would be no money left over at the end of it. So number one, I'd, I'd like to commend Hood and the other board members and some of them that stayed on there the whole time. I think everybody did their job, but we've come to the point in the time where we need to move on and transfer that money over to, to the county. You know, one of the things that we need to remember, the citizens of Beaufort County need to remember, is that the reason that we got out of the hospital business was because of the financial risk. I mean, if there hadn't been any financial risk, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now, we'd still be in the hospital business. So, you know, I don't, I, I would never vote as a commissioner to get back into the hospital business in Beaufort County. I think we would have to depend on somebody else coming in and doing exactly what Vidaant's doing. And I'm, I'm the first one to realize that, you know, we're gonna continue to see changes in healthcare. I was just out in Texas, and in Wichita Falls, they had three emergency rooms, and two of them have closed, there's only one left, and it basically is like a 24/7 hour clinic. Now, they do have a hospital, size of the town is a little over a hundred thousand people. They do have an emergency room within that hospital, but some were, you know, people thought that they did it one locally. And it's, but based on conversations with my son, it's pretty much like our 24/7 hour clinic in Bellhaven. It's not the place that you go to if you've been shot or if somebody has stabbed you, and you gotta go to a trauma center for that. Commissioner Bren, did you?
I would just like to make mention that the expansion at Vidaant Beaufort Hospital started out at three million dollars. And they realized, as they got into planning for, for the new expansion, how much more they needed to make sure that the hospital was viable and could serve Beaufort County. Now that price tag is seventeen million dollars. And I find it very hard to believe that Vidaant or any company would, would want to spend seventeen million dollars and then go out of business.
Mr. Chairman, let me correct something. The original lease agreement was that within, I believe it was three years, Vidaant would spend the seventeen million dollars on the, yes, it was, I was there. Don't forget, I was there. And, well, I'm sorry, we disagree, but I was chairman of that board, and I was there, and I'm the one that tried to get them to do it. Vidaant took their own sweet time to spend this money. They are, they are in violation of their lease agreement now, the fact that they're doing this now. And these guys think just because it's something you and Shiny going in up the hill up there with borrowed money, that they're in, they're in a safe position. Well, okay, you guys do whatever you wanna do, just remember you were told.
Okay. Commissioner Buzzio?
First of all, I just wanna clarify something. Last year, we had, I think it was two or three attorneys, Vidaant's attorney, our attorney, and the attorney that, the county's attorney, did a study of the lease agreement, and their results of the study was that Vidaant was in full agreement with the lease. And yes, Vidaant didn't have to spend ten million dollars, you're right.
They didn't have to, no.
And they could've upgraded the one, the existing room. But yes, and, and they put like forty-plus million dollars into the county. In 2016 alone, they put almost a million dollars into community benefits with health education screen. They've given out each year since they've been here, a hundred thousand dollars to various organizations within the county. They even gave us, about three or four years ago, when we were starting our EMS system, they gave us a half a million dollars for an ambulance. So they've been a good neighbor, and I'll tell you something. The money we, excuse me, the money we have left, the 4.5 million, would last us nineteen days if we were intend to run. And if we were gonna run a hospital, if we could even get the staff, would cost us two dollars and forty-five cents a year in taxes, minimum, for a hundred dollars. And the organizations that would come in and run a hospital here, they're in the process of closing another 500 rural hospitals throughout the United States. So as Mr. Commissioner, Chairman Waters said, healthcare in this country is changing. We're, right now, we're very lucky to have a hospital here that's put a lot of money into this county. As Commissioner Evans said, not many people put that kind of money in here and built the, the 24/7 clinic in Bellhaven, which I think has seen over twenty patient, twenty thousand patient visits, minimum, since its inception.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a vote at this time. I think everybody's had a chance to talk at least one time. So all those in favor of the motion, the recommendation, raise your right hand. All those opposed, vote was six one. Now entertain motion number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion number two is the money to be transferred to Beaufort County is to be placed in the capital reserve fund to support healthcare needs within the county. That we require, after talking.
Just one item, if you would, if you'd strike capital from that.
Oh.
There was a correction in that, they didn't get into the, it should be healthcare reserve fund.
Okay. Well, what we're trying to do is, is structured so that we require board approval to, to, for any expansion, expenditures from the fund. So the motion would be the money to be transferred to Beaufort County is to be placed in the reserve fund to support healthcare needs within the county. And that goes along with motion three also, so you may wanna look at that, but that's my motion number two. I make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Discussion, questions, comments?
Well, I'm gonna discuss some more because this is really an important issue for Beaufort County. It, it concerns the future of the county. You got Bellhaven down there now that's gonna dry up and virtually blow away mainly because the, the last economic development thing they had is gone from them. And I'm not saying that this hospital will go away, there'll probably be somebody here, but these guys landed on it when they said healthcare is changing. We don't know how healthcare is changing. And that's why it is wise to keep the authority board, which can act as a hospital authority board. There's a lot of, lot of authority, I don't call it an authority board for nothing. Once you dissolve it, what you're gonna find out is every time that you want something, you're gonna have to go on your hands and knees to Raleigh, to some bureaucrat, to beg for it. There's a lot of flexibility in not dissolving that, that hospital board. The creation of a fund is, is just another way of saying, you know, Vidaant's gonna wind up with this money. Vidaant didn't do anything but give your money back to you for all these great things that you think people are doing for you. And again, that's borrowed money over there on the hill. That's all it is, is borrowed money. When things change, when the financial sea changes, the almost billion dollars that Vidaant owes for all of that shiny stuff they've put up over in Greenville, and they can't make the payments, you're gonna see a sea change in a, in a whole lot of things. And it's just a matter of time, in my opinion, before we go back through another 1929 depression. And, and we need to, we need to do things now that are gonna hold us in good stead when the hard times do come.
Any other comments as it relates to the reserve fund? We got a motion, and did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in, anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, vote was six one. Now we'll entertain motion number three.
Motion number three, with the approval of the county commissioners, the fund so dedicated to support healthcare needs within the county, may be borrowed for projects that have a minimum ten-year life. Borrowed money must be paid back in monthly installments, including interest at a minimum interest rate received by the county on invested idle funds.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Bren, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Questions, comments as it relates to the motion? Yes, sir.
It says to borrow, to borrow the money with a minimum interest. What, what is, what do you mean by that?
The, Anita, do you want to address that? I know you and I had some conversation in Bryan as it related to the minimum interest rate.
Yeah.
No, I mean, what you gonna borrow the money for? I mean, what you gonna do with the money?
The board would, would be allowed, would, would look at that and determine what there may be, what that fund may be borrowed for. What we put in there is some restrictions, it couldn't be anything less than a ten-year life on a capital project or for healthcare needs. But any money that would be borrowed would have to be paid back, just like you were drawing a loan off of it, and you'd have to pay it back at the interest rate in which we would receive on idle county funds.
Well, well, motion two was it will be reserved for healthcare.
That's correct.
So if you could, so that, that shuts you down for borrowing it for anything you want to, for a ten-year capital project.
Well, that's what this ordinance does, that's what this ordinance allows you to do based on that.
Just for healthcare.
Well, for healthcare or projects that the board approves that have a ten-year life or longer.
Okay.
As you, as you remember, the last meeting, we had, we had a discussion as it related to the three million that we were looking at borrowing and having to get approval from the local government commission. One of our citizens had made the recommendation probably two months ago in a letter to the commissioners, and it was also in the Washington Daily Newsletter, and Warren Smith made this recommendation, and we discussed it at the last meeting, and it appeared that that would be better than going through the local government commission and going to a local bank and pledging assets and paying, paying a higher rate if this money was moved over into, from the hospital authority over into the county. Any other?
Thank you.
Any other comment? I mean, I, I think that each time, we can determine what the interest rate is, that it basically is saying that it would be at a minimum, the rate that we were, were getting, whether that's one percent or one and a half.
We would bring that to you every time.
Is that a floating rate or a fixed rate at the time the loan's made?
It's, it's a fixed rate on what we're receiving. What we would do is we would look at what kinda interest we would be receiving on our idle funds, 'cause these funds would sit in our.
Well, if we're receiving one percent on our idle funds today, and it's a ten-year loan, is it gonna be one percent nine years from now when interest rates are at four percent?
Yes.
Yes, because that's the way you would borrow money.
It's a fixed rate?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the other option.
No variable rates.
We actually don't qualify to borrow money at a variable rate.
Not allowed to do that.
I got you. The other option we had, Commissioner, or would have Commissioner Richardson, is that if we called two or three local lenders and they said they would do a ten-year loan at 2.99 percent, we would have, we, you know, we're paying money back to the county.
Ourselves.
So it's really a matter of, you know, you have to increase the budget since there'd be payments coming back. So, I mean, we could do anything for, between, say, one and a half percent and three percent right now in today's market, I guess.
I think our, our point of it was, these funds, when, when they come over, are going to be invested by the county as idle funds like we would normally do. And whatever return we received on those, we would be obligated to pay that because it wouldn't be fair to, to not pay that back, that interest back. So that's why we're matching that and saying that at a minimum, you gotta pay that. If the board says you wanna pay more than that, that's fine, but at a minimum, you gotta pay what you would've had your funds invested idly at.
Any, you got anybody else? Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed, five two. Now we're down to item number, item number nine, the funding of fiscal year seventeen, eighteen capital items.
My case of redland.
Jesus.
Resolution has to be, does the resolution, the taxes, the resolutions?
Actually, it's an ordinance, and yes, we need to adopt the ordinance so we can appreciate the funds.
Okay.
Brian's saying that's what motion two was.
No, I'm sorry, motion three. That was what your motion three was.
Yeah.
But I mean, if, if you.
Yeah, it says budget.
That's fine.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the, the, to establish healthcare reserve fund for this fund, for this money.
Okay. The resolution, it's in your book, is on page 131. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion second by Commissioner Bren. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We're voting on the ordinance part?
On the ordinance.
The three?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we already voted on that. We were voting on it again, right?
Well, we're, this is declared, since this is a.
Loan.
An ordinance.
I got you.
On page 131. So this, this shows the income coming in and the professional services and payments that, that would have to be paid out of it. Okay? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, six one.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing that doesn't require a vote. But with your concurrence, I'd like to prepare letters of appreciation to members of the hospital authority board for the service that they provided, and that's for Jim Christman, Mark Nielsen, David Swarner, Suzanne Gray, Betty Murphy, yourself, Richard Richmond, and Commissioner Langley.
Okay. We got a recommendation, recommendation to do a letter of appreciation to the board members. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, six one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We're down to item number nine, the funding of the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen capital items. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The information I have in front of you, as you'll recall, in the seventeen, eighteen budget, there was a three million dollar installment financing package that was discussed. As the chairman has, has talked about, there was discussion that originated in the public that came back to this board about, instead of borrowing money, essentially borrow it from yourselves. At the time that we put this together, this budget together, those funds were not accessible. They were, they were with the hospital authority. Those funds are now accessible, you've indicated that you wanna use those funds, under the certain restrictions that have been laid out there. Over, in November, eighty percent of the county projects that were a part of this package were bid out, and those excluded the school projects. And you have the attached summarized sheet that shows those different projects and what the bids came back in, or if there was not a bid yet, what we anticipated that being. Contingency is also placed in on those, and you see that of the biggest project that we had, the courthouse improvements, we originally budgeted that at about a half a million dollars. Those, those numbers came back in from three, from three contracts, we had three contracts bid on that at 1.2 million. The, the way we structured that was that we, we bid the project on three different levels, the basement, the first floor, and the second floor. We did that so that if there were issues with the numbers, we'd be able to say, we don't wanna do all of it, we wanna do certain pieces of it. You have to do the basement. The basement is the piece that has the fire separation issue that was identified by the state of North Carolina, their, their Department of DHHS in the jail section, identified that as, as a life safety issue that you've gotta correct. Those plans have been submitted by the architect that was engaged. At the time that we put this budget together, we anticipated that, and we anticipated doing some work on the second and third floor cosmetic-wise. When we got into it with the architect, that same design on, from the basement to the first floor, is the same issue of fire separation between the first floor and the second floor. You don't have to worry about fire separation between the third floor and the roof, it just goes through the roof. There's nobody on the roof. But the issue on the, on the first floor is to ensure that if there's a fire that breaks out on the first floor, you're protecting the, the occupants on the second floor. So that separation has to be there. So that added some cost to it. So essentially, you have a, you have a total cost of 1.2. We looked at.
That's for the whole project.
That's for the entire project.
So we budgeted three million, is that right?
No, sir. No, sir. We budgeted three million for the entire capital piece.
Oh, okay.
So when you look at the spreadsheet, when you look at the spreadsheet on page one thirty-three, you'll see the capital items, you'll see the budget amount that we originally had when we were, when we were working on this in, in May, or in April and May. Then you'll see what our bids came back in last month, little of November, what contingency we've added in, what kind of differences you're looking at. So based on that, based on the, the overage that came in on the courthouse, there's about 774,000 dollars over if you do every one of those projects. Then there's also the piece that we talked about, in doing the work in the basement, in the jail, you've gotta remove the prisoners. They've gotta come out because we've gotta go in there, take down some ceiling grid and do the fire spraying, the fireproofing spraying. So we've budgeted in there 275,000 dollars to move prisoners out. That's for eight weeks during that renovation, because they can't be in there. So if you look at what we budgeted, based on what we knew in, in, in April, May, and then what kind of bids we received last month, we're about a, we're a little over a million dollars difference. So in that, we've given you some scenarios. We've talked about what it is, how you make that difference up. So scenario one at the top, you see there's 1.022352 shortfall. You need that much money. We figured out we can reduce our general fund appropriate, our general fund expenditures by about 122,000. And then we would recommend to you, if you wanted to stay in the three, in that, that you could appropriate 400,000 dollars in fund balance. And then instead of borrowing three million, you could borrow an additional half million from the, from the capital fund, from the healthcare reserve fund. So that's three and a half, that balances you out to zero. Now that means you're doing everything. You're doing all the projects. You're not taking any of those projects out and you're not doing selected levels of the courthouse. So that's one scenario for you. That's doing everything and moving forward. Scenario two, we looked at was, what, what could you do to stay within the three million that you originally had? So the amount of funding, again, is a little over a million dollars. We said, don't complete the third floor of the courthouse. The majority of that's cosmetic. It, it is, it is, however, the area where the courtrooms exist. It's taken out the ceiling grid, it's putting in new lighting and doing some work there. So, but it is not related to a fire separation issue that, that we believe strongly, not only you have to do, but from, in the basement, from the, from the, from Dean or from DHHS's perspective, but from, from our perspective on the fire. You, you need to do the first floor as well. So we only took out the third floor. Then we said, don't do the Tideland site work and paving. That's the parking lot at the Tideland building where elections and, and is there, is there, we said defer that at 110. We said defer the paving next door at the, at the attorney's office. And we said fund, we would find general fund reductions to pay for the generator for the Seaboard building at 125 out of, out of existing funds. And then that would require about a hundred and, about 316,000 dollars in fund balance to be appropriated. So what we wanted to do was talk through this with you to see what you wanted to do and how you wanted to move forward this project.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Bren.
You know, I think that, that we, we need, whether we pave the parking lot at the Tideland building or not, some serious work needs to go on there. I mean, you can't hardly drive your car through there.
Commissioner Bren, I'd agree with you that there's a lot of serious work that needs to be done and that's why we put all this together. Unfortunately, the numbers are not where we wanted to be. We've, we've tried to provide you some scenarios in which you could, which you could say, we're gonna do it all, or we're gonna pay it back, so.
And also the generator at the, at the Seaboard building, I think that's a necessary thing to do.
I, I agree. And, and we've shown that as being done, no matter what, we would, we would find reductions to be able to do that because that is the system, that is the generator that runs that system, that handles all our IT. We, we came that close to having some bad issues during the last hurricane, when that went down. Funds are, it controls our 911 system as well, so.
Those are the only two things that I would like the C stay in. The rest of them can, can be put on hold as far as I'm concerned.
We've got to do the basement of the courthouse.
Oh, yeah. I, I understand that. Yeah.
You're talking about scenario two, is what you're looking at?
No, I'm looking at, yeah, scenario two.
Okay.
No, sir. Actually, he's, he's talking about a modification of scenario number two because he's saying the Tideland parking lot needs to be done. We actually showed that is taken out.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
On the third floor of the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about the courtrooms. And exactly what we're gonna do, the ceiling?
We're gonna redo the grid, if you've been over there.
Yeah.
You know, the, the starting process for, and again, I'm, I'm not telling you something you don't already know, but the starting process for that courthouse was the roof. We had a leak in roof. We have fixed that. That has now been completed and fixed. Now, that, that fixes the upper envelope. We still gotta replace windows over there in the upcoming year or two because they're in bad shape. But this starts the process from where we, we would go in and replace the ceiling grid, take it from a two by four grid to a two by two grid, and replace the lighting that's in there on the third floor. Again, it's, it's cosmetic, but, but it is in sad shape. You know, I think y'all have seen the pictures, I think you've been over there, I think the, you heard from the, from the clerk of court. There's just a lot of deferred capital, a lot of deferred maintenance that's gone on over the years that we need to catch up on.
Would it be the same contractor be doing the whole thing?
Yes, sir. This was bid, the contractors that bid on this project bid it, bid it in the three sections as well as overall.
So if we don't do it now, sooner or later, we're gonna have to do it.
If you don't do it now, sooner or later, you're gonna have to do it.
And the cost will probably be high.
Don't know about what the cost would be, but you would end up paying for mobilization twice. You, you would go from essentially one year worth of headache where you do it all to one year of headache, because you gotta do the basement to, and first floor, to a second year of headache when you eventually got to doing it. So, because the, the reason the costs on this are higher than what we anticipated was because of the premium time to have to work. We can't, you gotta continue to have court going on. There's a fair amount of after hours work, there's a fair amount of weekend work that's involved in this because you can't disrupt the, the court activity and go in and tear the courtroom up while they're there.
And did I hear that the work on the courthouse, in this price, would include offsite for the, the prisoners?
We have budgeted in there 275,000 dollars, which we feel is a fairly decent number. We've had a conversation with Chief Deputy Rose about that, that would allow us to move those prisoners offsite during the time period in which they're doing the spray, fireproofing in the, in the basement, in the jail, and redoing the, the shower situation down there because we gotta get them out and then we bring them back. They, they would be there when we were working on the, obviously on the, the rest of it, just not in the jail area.
Okay, thank you.
And you allotted eight weeks for that work to be done?
That is what the contractor told us. That's what the, that's what they told us.
That, that's on the jail.
Yeah.
Right. Jail part. Commissioner Evans?
A couple of things to kinda add, I guess, bad news to this, or, or I look at it like it's, the register deeds office is pretty much full now. I think they got enough room to put two more racks in there. So we're running out of room there. So with that same old thing, we're kicking that can down the street, but we gotta deal with this too. And I'd like if Christina would come up and talk about, I mean, you had mentioned it to me, but some of the problems we have with that roof, it had to be the way that, you know, had to work on it when the judges said it's okay. So I'm just trying to figure out, can we sit down and figure out a, a better way to be more efficient, like if the, the judges are at their conference and that courthouse is empty and it happens that we got all hands on deck and we're not ten minutes working on it and thirty minutes setting up and thirty minutes tearing down?
And, and, and we anticipated doing that this time around with the roof, except that during the judges' conference, it rained that entire week. So it was impossible for us to have folks working on the roof.
Hopefully it won't rain inside the building.
Right. But the issue, the issue with the premium time, having to work after hours or when court's not in session, if, if the, the administration of the court requires that there be recording equipment and there be a transcript and, and everybody's gotta be able to hear and hear very clearly, so, you know, it, it is not appropriate for us to be disturbing the court. I mean, you may say, well, what's the big deal? You hear, you hear folks working in the basement. But if that attorney, if that judge, if that transcriptionist, sonographer, can't hear what's being said, that may, you know, that is what the Court of Appeals rules when they look at, they read the transcript. And if somebody made a mistake in that transcript because they couldn't hear, we don't want responsibility for that. So we do believe that there are opportunities for us to work with the judges, to do some things to help minimize that. And we've stressed that to the contractor. So, but, but for us to just shut down and say, you know, we're not gonna hold court, it's a little bit out of, out of the realm.
We know other courthouses go through this, so there's a possibility, you know, to find out whether we can move court to another location. Just something when these guys come in to work.
I believe, I mean, the price that you see there, in order to get the price as low as it is, as crazy as that sounds, will require close coordination with the court staff, with the judges, with the clerk of court. Because right now, we're only showing a portion of the work done during premium time. It's not like the courthouse roof where the entire project had to be done on the weekends. So this is currently showing, you know, when we looked with the designer, looking at what is included in the project, what would we be able to do during the day, what would we not be able to do during the day. The superior courtroom is not fully occupied five days a week. The district courtroom normally is. So the work that will be done in the superior courtroom will, more than likely, quite a bit of it will be done during normal working hours. If you're talking about people putting in ceiling grid, that's not something that has, that uses pneumatic tools and that type of thing, that would be extremely loud. So a portion of this work, we are planning to do that. Unfortunately, for instance, the register of deeds, we cannot relocate the register of deeds. You can't move them to a different facility. You can't, there's no way to work around that portion of the courthouse. The, the areas that we can work around, I believe the staff will be more than accommodating for us. Obviously, they want this project to happen. It will be more welcoming, a better working environment for them, so I'm not anticipating difficulty with that. You know, I hate to say it's in their best interest, but it really is. You know, they're looking forward to it. They go to this place and spend half of their life in this building, so I think they'll be very accommodating. But again, it is, it's difficult work. The ceilings in the courthouse are very high ceilings, so it is gonna be difficult to get in there, especially the courtrooms. There are, you know, pews that are fastened to the, to the floor. So it's not like you can just go in and move an extension ladder from place to place to place. It will take coordination to do. Again, it, it will be a very difficult project. It will be. I mean, it's just a difficult building to work in.
Commissioner Booth?
Commissioner Langley? I'm thinking about what you said about the register of deeds, but the register of deeds also has space down in the basement. Is that not, that's not filled capacity, is it?
The register of deeds does not currently have items stored there that are for public viewing.
But they do have the space.
There is space that the register of deeds has, items are there, yes. But it's the very limited access to that space.
I, I guess when, you know, when we got the prices back on the courthouse, that's, that's the biggest item. You know, until you put it out for bid, you really don't know what, what the outcome is gonna be. Based on my experience when I was with Wells Fargo, it is, it's hard when you go in a building and you start remodeling. And so it's bad. So I, I would hate to see us go in and do it, you know, the basement and the first floor because time wise, I think long term, we're better off to go in it and go ahead and use the same contractor and knock the courthouse act. I think it gets down to, you know, on the funding part, how do, how do we fund it? Or how do, you know, do we take some of these other projects out? But I, I would personally like to see us tackle the courthouse and go ahead and, and do that this one time. Because it is gonna be tough with people in there working in the court system, as well as our daily employees in the other departments.
Yes, sir.
When you, when you look at the funding strategy or either, or taking out some of the projects, any, any comments as it relates to that? We've heard Commissioner Bren talk about two projects that he would like to say stay in there. It, you know, one of the possibilities was increasing the loan from three to three and a half million. And then the rest of it would be coming out of the, the fund balance and the budget reduction would allow us to go ahead and do all of these projects at one time. My comment as it relates to the First Bank renovation is that, you know, this is an asset that we purchased and we, you know, to me, we need to move our financial services and over there and we need to be able to, to move forward that project. You know, none of this is easy and I, I think we kicked some of this stuff down, you know, year after year after year, and these renovations are not gonna get any cheaper and the repairs that we're talking about. So I personally would like to see us go ahead and do the list that we've been talking about since our budget process and consider increasing our loan from three million to three and a half and using our fund balance and budget reductions to do, do all of the projects that we've been discussing.
Commissioner, Chairman?
Yes.
Question for, for y'all. We took 500,000 dollars out of fund balance and, and put it aside to do these, a few little projects. That money will.
We took 500,000 dollars, we didn't take 500,000 dollars out of fund balance?
We voted to take 500,000 dollars out of.
No, no, no. You, you voted to allow us to go ahead and move forward with, with using those funds without, before we got the loan commitment.
I thought that you took it out of fund balance and, and put it in a capital.
Well, if he uses it, he will, but he'll return it with this money.
Right. So, and, and, and when you talk about fund balance, and I know that, that the report has not been released yet, but we got a draft copy of our, of our audit from last fiscal year. So when we talk about the use of fund balance, last year, in your budget that you adopted, approved, and we administered, you anticipated spending 3.2 million dollars in fund balance. That's what the budget, that's what last fiscal year's budget was adopted at, 3.2 million in fund balance. You actually spent 1.5. So you're 1.7 to the good looking forward. Does that make sense? I'm not saying you returned money, I'm just saying you didn't spend as much as you anticipated you were gonna spend.
And your percentage didn't fall as low as we anticipated it would, as far as percentage of available fund balance to expenditures. So originally, we had said, sorry, that it would fall at about 25 and a half percent. Well, it's gonna come in closer to about 27, 27 and a half percent.
Twenty-seven and a half?
Twenty-seven to 27 and a half.
So the way we budget, when we look, when we do forward looking projections, we say, you're gonna spend every bit of your budget since you adopted that budget. There's no other way for us to, I mean, it wouldn't make sense for us to say, well, you adopted, you know, 60 million dollar budget, we don't think you're gonna spend all that, you're only spending 58 of it, so we're gonna make a forward looking projection that's two million plus. We anticipate looking forward, saying, you're gonna spend every bit of what you said you were gonna spend. You didn't do that, so you're, you're to the good, you're better to the good. You would be able, so when you think about taking this 400,000 out of fund balance, you're still to the good if you had spent everything that you budgeted last year, which is what you budgeted.
So if we, if we take the, the 3.4 million dollars out of, or the 3.4 million dollars, then we can do all these projects we're talking about?
3.5 is what?
Was it 3.5?
3.5.
If you do the 3.5 and you take an additional 400 out of fund balance, you can do all these projects and you'll be better off than what we anticipated you would be this time now, based on our savings from last year.
Chairman.
Chairman?
Yes.
If we only took out 3 million, then we'd have to take 900,000 out of fund balance?
That's correct. And, and from our perspective, we like it when you set up a payment plan and do a, we're paying ourselves back. We'd rather you stay as liquid.
And what interest?
Well, we have to decide that, too.
And how long would the loan be for?
10 years.
10 years.
King, hospital, king.
And currently, we're, we're getting what?
Two.
Currently, on idle funds, we're receiving 1.2% in interest. And that's what we've, and, and that's what we've run, that's what we've run our numbers on, you know. And, and I'm sure people gasp when they hear that, but there's certain, I mean, the general statutes are very clear in what you can invest your money in and what you cannot invest your money in. And you have to protect the principal, and there are lots of other things that you have to do with that money that, that make it, you know, you, you can't go invest in derivatives, you can't go invest in those bad things because the state will not allow us to do that to protect the money. So, that's why the interest rate's only 1.2, which is actually fairly good.
And just to let you know what that equates to over the life of the loan, on a 3 and a half million dollar loan at 1.2% interest, the interest paid over the life of the loan is $216,000. And at 2.49%, which is the low bid that I received on a bank loan, it would be $457,000 interest.
Double.
It's double.
It is double.
So, you, so if we borrow the 3 million, we're going to get 2.1, we would have to pay 2.9% interest?
My recommendation to you is you pay the idle fund amount. I mean, because that's what we would invest it at. You know, the bank, if we were to go to the bank and borrow it, they're going to, they're going to figure out their profit, and, and, and you can't borrow, I mean, you can't borrow money for what you're getting interest on it right now. I mean, you never can. So, our recommendation to you would be that you, you pay yourself back on what the, the interest that you would get on idle funds, not some additional higher amount just because.
Commissioner Langley?
I've been a commissioner now, and this is my 18th year. And basically, what I've seen us do is respond to what's wrong. And I think it's time for the county to take a stand and, and take care of the things that are wrong and moving forward to be proactive in everything that we do. So, we, we need to just draw our line in the sand and go ahead and do what needs to be done, and just simply make sure that, that moving forward, that we take care of what we have, and we don't end back up in this same predicament that we're in now.
And Commissioner Langley, I would, I would agree with you 100%, and I think this board has taken those measures moving forward to do that. You've identified projects that, that have been put off for years, and, and we've brought those forward to you, and you've put in place a facility study that we're waiting on the final report from, that will lay all that out for us, so we can put together that long-term capital plan, so that you don't continue to get behind and push things off. That'll be laid out for you, so we're, we're getting there.
Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes.
Can I make a motion?
You sure can.
I'd like to make a motion that we borrowed the 3.5 million from the Hospital Authority Fund, plus draw down $400,000 from fund balance to complete all of these projects.
You want to add to it that, that we, well, I don't guess we had to have the, the general fund budget reduction? Is that...
I will have to bring back to you next month the budget amendment that moves all this money around and accomplishes your motion.
All right. Is there a second to the motion? I'll, I'll second the motion.
Clarification?
Ah, yes.
Do we have to put in a motion that you're going to pay it back on a monthly basis with the...
You, you've already said that when you established the Healthcare Reserve Fund, that it had to be, that if you borrowed it for projects that were more than 10 years. And that's one of the things that we looked at. You'll see, like on the Communications Tower, we're, we're not going to have to do that. We're not going to have to, to do that one. That's why it's showing zero. And, and any, any improvements that we'll have to make out there, we're going to pay for under our existing budget because it wouldn't meet the 10-year threshold. So, we're holding ourselves to that 10-year threshold and making sure that's right.
Okay, we've got a motion and, and a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I can't see yours, Jerry. Okay. Four? Okay, those opposed? Ah, three. The vote's four to three. We'll go to the next item. The capital projects. Brian, item number 10.
Yes, sir. Start on page 134. You've got the capital projects. These are the bid tabulations. Obviously, we, we had to wait to determine where you were on funding these. Based on that, my understanding is you want to move forward with all the projects. You have these three. The first one is, is the courthouse bid tabulation. The second one is the roofing projects, and the third one is the First Bank renovation bid tab. Out of this, what we would recommend to you is, is to accept those bid tabs and for us to move forward with the project. Now you have funding established.
Okay. I, I understand the, the courthouse. When we look on the page 136, tell me which one of these were proven?
You're approving Curtis Construction. Curtis Construction with alternate number one and alternate number two. Alternate number one puts fixed ladders on the building, and alternate two...
Both are fixed ladders. One is on the, a fixed ladder on the old jail building, and another is a fixed ladder on the annex building. So, to provide safe access to the roofs for walkers, so that they do not have to go through the interior of the building, so they were in three patches.
I, I was trying to match up with the 611,000.
No, that's shown separately. It should be the base bid plus the alternates.
Okay, okay. All right. That answers my question. Any, any other questions as it relates to these various bids?
I got, I want, the only problem I have is we just borrowed 3.5 million dollars to take care of these projects. And, and I hate to keep saying this every time we have a meeting, but I had, since I've been here, and we can, we don't know what it's going to cost. This is just a bid. My question is, where is the money going to come from for the change orders? Because they darn sure come.
Well, in the contingency, there's 106,000.
Oh, they'll eat that up one evening.
We have, we've built some contingency in there. We've been very successful with the roofing projects.
I understand that. I understand that. And, and, and probably 50% of our bids, you get change orders. And 106, in a, in a project, in a project this massive, $106,000 is not a lot of contingency. That's one stroke of the pen.
It's 5%.
Now, where's, if, if these overruns, where, where, where the money going to come from for overruns?
Again, what it would take is us to go back and, and, and adjust on the scope. If we had, if we saw, if there was an issue that occurred, we'd either adjust with the contractor on the scope, if there was something we could do, or we'd come back to you and you'd discuss it. I mean, our, our, our goal is, is to not exceed that. I mean, you're right. You never know until you get into tearing stuff off, but nobody knows that. I mean, it's not, it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect science, so we will, we will do the best we can.
I understand.
Make sure that we're using those funds appropriately.
Any other discussion? Okay, got a motion and a second. I think we...
They'll accept these bids?
Yes. Did we, did we get a motion? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Sir, move.
Motion by Commissioner Bren. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of accepting the bids on the capital projects, raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? Vote six, one. Okay, we're down to item number 11. County and local jurisdiction meetings. Commissioner Busio.
Thank you, Mr. Bren. Commissioner, what I'd like to propose is a motion that would allow the chairman and vice chairman of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners and the county manager to discuss with Beaufort County elected mayors about feasibility establishing quarterly or more frequently as required meetings to discuss issues, projects, programs, et cetera, that could or would impact county and local jurisdictions. The intention would be that each jurisdiction would designate two elected officials in their town or city manager. Local county chairman, vice chairman, county manager would be designated representing such a committee. I think this would open up broader communication between the county and the local jurisdictions. We may find that there's a number of issues that could affect both of us or one or the other. So, therefore, the following, I'd like to make the following motion. Motion to designate the chairman, vice chairman, county manager, the board of commissioners to discuss with Beaufort County elected mayors to determine the feasibility of establishing quarterly or more frequently as required meetings to discuss issues, projects, programs, et cetera, that could or wouldn't impact county and the local jurisdictions.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll, I'll second the motion. Any comments?
Oh, yeah, there's comments.
Okay.
We don't, you know, county government works pretty well right now. When we need to go talk to somebody, we need to go talk to somebody, and we've worked with all of these jurisdictions insofar as county government is concerned very well. What we're talking about doing here is creating another bureaucracy of people sitting around, talking, and what comes out of these things? And we've seen this, like the Beaufort 360 and some of these other groups that have these social needs and money needs, they become lobby groups, and all of a sudden, you get new ideas and new liberalism and new socialism. We don't need to create more government, and that's what you're doing when you do this. Well, let's just keep doing what we've been doing when we need to talk to a municipal jurisdiction. We talk to municipal jurisdiction. We don't need a bunch of the boys sitting around drinking coffee trying to figure out how to spend money.
Other discussion? Okay. If not, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the recommended motion, raise your right hand. Okay. All those opposed? Vote was five to two. Item number 12, the bid and offer to purchase property. David?
Gentlemen, we have three bids, and that was just, I think, five minutes before we started tonight. We went from two to three. We're still, we're getting upset bids on these before we ever get them filed, and then we're getting upset bids during the 10 days, once, once we run heads, which is, that's the good news. The three that we have are 625 Croatan Street in Bell Haven. We have an offer of $100 and a $20 deposit that's been paid. 272 West Pantico Street, Bell Haven, $4,500 deposit of $230 has been paid. And a third one is Union Street, number five, Bell Haven, in the amount of $50, and a $5 deposit has been made to our office. And we're asking that you accept these bids subject to the 10-day advertisement and write an upset bid with the scope in mind. So, move.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Commissioner Booth made the motion. Commissioner Bren, second. Comments, questions? If none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you. Item number 13, the 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule.
I have a question for you. I've got a, a, a project schedule for the meeting for the downtown community, as well as two dates for your retreats. And I would prefer people on the dates, so that helps them send them out.
I think everyone's had a chance to look at everything except the retreats. We didn't get the retreat dates.
No, sir.
Okay.
Chairman, it's, it's in the same timeframe as you had last year. It just moves down one, one day, one date.
Any dates we need to consider?
I'm checking the retreat dates. It was normally in February, it...
It was, it was the other February. It's the first week of February.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
Sir, move.
Motion by Commissioner Busio, second by Commissioner Bren. All those in favor of the schedules for our monthly meeting as well as the retreats, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Now we go to item number 14, that was on the consent agenda, which is the purchase order of contracts over 20,000. Anita?
Yes, I believe Commissioner Richardson pulled that for a question.
I did pull that for a question. The, the first item on here is medications and pharmaceuticals for the jail, $60,000. My question is, did we bid this?
So, the $60,000 would fall in the informal range for bidding, and I did speak with Charlie about that via text and made sure that they did go through that process, and he told me that several vendors were reviewed and interviewed. The vendor that was selected was because of price and service. The jail and health department concurred on the decision, and the $60,000 amount is based on the approximate spending by Southern Health Partners.
Where is Clinical Solutions Pharmacy? Where are they located?
I can try to Google it. I'm not sure.
Well, you know, you can, you can let me know that later if you don't know now. My next question is, did, did they give a price list? Are we working off of a price list? A published price list?
That's a question for Chief Deputy Rose or Director Madison at the Health Department. I'm not sure.
Well, you know, that brings me to this. If we don't know the answers to those questions, what kind of controls do we have on the amount of money that's spent here? We, and the answer is that we don't unless somebody can come up with, with answers to these. The next question is, who requisitions the drugs?
Yeah, I can answer that.
You know, and the next question is, under what conditions would we requisition drugs? I know the health director was in here telling us that he was going to change the lives of all of these prisoners with this medicine. So, you know, the kind of medicines that I know of that changed their lives, I, you know, we probably wouldn't want to talk about, and make them happy and, and docile people in the world relieve their criminal activity, their tendencies, but, you know, under what conditions are we going to be ordering drugs? And I asked this before, when, when he, when he came in here with this, what are your protocols? And everybody sat around here and tried to make sure Hood Richardson didn't know what a protocol was. So, you got any answers?
The only, one of the answers I have for you is that according to this, it's, it's located in Franklin, Tennessee.
Wow, super. I think that the board, I would make a motion, for the board entertain a motion that Chief Rose appear before this board and give us some answers to these questions at the next meeting.
I don't...
Don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion for that. We just, Brian just asked him to be at the next meeting?
Well, we asked him to be at this meeting, and he's not here.
Is, is this time sensitive for these drugs?
My guess is that it is because they were to start, was it November 1st? Because we, we pulled this last month, because I was, I knew I couldn't answer your questions.
Mm-hmm. My understanding was somebody was going to be here that could answer them at this meeting. So, you know, they're not here, don't have the answers. So, you know, I think Chief Rose should appear at the next meeting, prepared to answer these questions. I mean, we got people using cars for personal purposes. How do we know we're not going to have people using drugs for personal purposes? What kind of controls are on this?
Isn't the Health Department, excuse me, Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Isn't the Health Department administering these medicines?
Yes, sir.
But, but Mr. Richardson, why not ask the health director? They're the one that's doing it.
I don't care. I just want an answer.
Am I correct?
Who's in charge?
The, the Health Department is handling the jail health issue, and he, the nurses fall up underneath the Health Department, and so, yes, they would be dealing with the protocols that address that.
And that's probably who's purchasing the drugs.
But, but the budget, it's coming out of the budget of the Sheriff's Department.
That's correct.
I thought we set a budget up for the Health Department, and they're contracting essentially with, with the Health Department to do this. I thought we took all of that 300 and something thousand dollars or whatever it was, and that was a budget, an individual budget cost item that the Health Department was going to use to do what they wanted to do. Isn't that what, is it supposed to work?
Yes, there is a separate department that was set up in the Health Department.
So, why is the chief, why is Charlie Rose ordering drugs?
I'm assuming that they're collaborating together. I mean, we can request that he comes back and answers.
This thing is just as disorganized as I said it was going to be when everybody was in here giving me pie in the sky. They didn't have answers then. They don't have answers now.
Well, I, I would say Anita and I don't have answers. You're exactly right, but we're not running that program. We'll, we'll try to get them here to answer those questions.
The question is, is do we have a month to postpone this? If we have, if we have a need for these drugs, then we're going to be issuing possibly prescriptions, which is going to end up costing us more money. We have to assume the Health... We have to assume the Health Department, I'm ready to assume the Health Department knows what they're doing. We approved the program and they implemented the program.
But the Health Department didn't make the contract to buy the drugs, so, go ahead.
It's a blanket purchase order that would allow them to purchase pharmaceuticals.
That's the way.
They can still purchase pharmaceuticals.
They can make purchases, just not...
Just not at a blanket level like this.
Because they're saving money, they're serving money with a contract.
Under the purchasing guidelines established by the county, they can, they can make purchases that they need. This is, this just helps us do it on a longer-term basis. So, time-sensitive, they're okay.
So, they would still make the same purchases for two, probably using the same company because they probably supplied, there's a, there's a number of companies out there that supply facilities such as this and they specialize in that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll certainly be glad to ask Mr. Madsen to come to have a little, have additional conversation about that.
That's what I was about to say, just make sure somebody comes so that we can have a discourse about.
Maybe he wants to have me arrested.
Well, let's ask both of them to appear. Okay, we're down to item number K, which is a closed session.
Well, wait a minute, we haven't done all of the bid work yet.
What do you mean?
There's another $27,888 in here, the contract with inmate safekeeping with the Department of Public Safety. And there's another $63,000 blanket purchase order in here, the contract with the Washington County Detention Center. I didn't know Washington County was, you know, I told you, I thought we had somebody from Washington County in here for safekeeping. I didn't realize that we had worked up that Washington County was doing our safekeeping now. And that's fine because they're a whole lot closer than the people we've been using.
We have used them in the past.
Is this under the standard price that the legislature set up that everybody charges everybody?
Yes.
If not that, but they've negotiated some, they're working on negotiating some rates for some as well.
All right, that takes care of the blanket purchase order stuff that was under the consent agreement.
Okay, we do, you're, we need to vote, we need to take a vote on the, on the inmate safekeeping, both of these.
Yeah.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve those two.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Booth is a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of approving these two, one of them to the Department of Public Safety for $27,888 and then the Washington County Detention Center for $63,000. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I vote.
Okay.
Gary voted for it.
Yeah, he done.
Yep. Brennan asked to be excused, so I guess...
We hadn't excused him yet.
Okay, all right. We're down to item number K, closed session. This is, do you want to read us into that?
Motion to adjourn to go into closed session under SGS 143, F318, 1183, consultant employee or retained by public body in order to receive only client privilege between the attorney and public body. For discussion of this communication, Mary versus Board of...
Your motion to go into closed session?
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Busio is a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. We're now coming out of closed session. No actions to be taken, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I vote.
All right.